On the agenda? I don't have any slips.
Oh. I don't think any of them are not on the agenda. Here, more Christina.
Are we getting some slips in a moment?
We are.
Are they Freudian slips?
Yeah, well, sometimes.
Or they're pink slips?
Okay, these are all agenda items.
We actually had a Halloween skit some years ago and we dressed up as the pink slips. All right, I have one item, Jim Nacita.
Good evening, Jim Nacita, 302 Bluff Street here in Oregon City. I come tonight with a respectful request to the Planning Commission to provide at least a very specific and narrow reconsideration of the Aberneth Place Hotel approval based primarily on the bicycle access question. And I have two grounds that I think, what I think was, I don't know if they'd rise to the level of irregularity, but at least concern. And the two specific grounds are the following. First, in ORS 227 that governs cities in these kinds of hearings, once the record closes, I, as a participant, can't speak to you all. I can't raise my hand and point out something that was said that was wrong on the part of staff or one of the commissioners. I have to just sit there and watch. Same for the applicant. There's a curious part of that statute, however, is that it's not ex parte contact for staff to talk to the commission. And during that discussion on the bicycle accessway, I witnessed, because I was in the back room, something that was very concerning to me. That was the applicant's attorney, Mr. King, and architect, Mr. Hill, got up from their seats and started whispering in the ear of staff. Now, it seems to me that's one way to get around the ex parte contact prohibition, is to transmit your comment or your point of information to staff by whispering it in their ear and then have staff, you know, communicate that to the commission. And I'd like to request that staff reveal what was said in those contents and, you know, how that was influenced, what advice they were giving to the commissioners. The second grounds I feel was important was what I witnessed staff doing during that meeting, especially during the bicycle accessway discussion, was providing what I believe was advice to the commissioners to, you know, advance the applicant's position and then withholding information or advice that might have changed your decision on that had you been given the information. Specifically, the city attorney was giving a discussion of the bicycle accessway standard about connectivity, but refrained from informing the commission on a couple of other things, including very specific block and access spacing standards that are numeric and very specific and had, you know, a very significant bearing on when you have to have a bicycle accessway. There were other points. For example, Mr. Mahoney raised the issue of dedication and this being on private property. Well, there's a provision in that code that staff or the attorney didn't raise with you about the requirement for a dedication, just like a developer has to dedicate a street. And the, sorry, Commissioner, that's absent tonight.
Paul Lesby?
No.
Zach Henken.
Mr. Henken had raised a question about lighting of the accessway. And I'm pretty sure that that is addressed in the bicycle accessway standard in the code as well. And again, staff didn't provide you with that information, you know, on any of those points, and they were very pertinent to the discussion. And again, I couldn't raise my hand and say, "But, but." And I certainly wasn't going to go and whisper in the ear of staff either, even though I saw, you know, the applicant's counsel and architect doing the exact same thing. Based on those two grounds, I think there was some irregularity in the final decision that I think warrants a reconsideration on, you know, at a minimum, that narrow, that narrow point. Thank you.
What, what meeting are we talking about?
October 23rd. Not the final one, but October 23rd where the preliminary vote was taken.
Okay.
The, the one where we close the record and we're going to get fined at the next meeting. Thank you.
We're going to pause here for a moment. While I ask the $64,000 question.
All right.
Well, the question is, thank you, that's about what I was going to say.
I guess, let me jump in for a second. Obviously, we just heard this for the first time, so we're kind of sorting through these things. And one of the first questions we ask is, "Is there authority for the Planning Commission to reconsider a decision?" Is a first question that, that we want, because, you know, the, the Planning Commission did adopt findings and it is a final decision and so...
Do you, do we want to just move on and get back to this?
I can...
Or, I mean, or do we have to answer this right this second?
I would love just to answer it, just so it's all clear. So, while our city attorney's reading the...
So, the request is to reconsider on the issue regarding bicycle connectivity?
Mr. Kabeisman's reading that section of our code for reconsideration. We do have a section, so he's reviewing it right now. But I can respond to what was said, because I do know what was said. And that was when there was some whispering on the opposite side of the dial. So, it wasn't to me, it was to Pete, or maybe there might have been some to me as well. And then, anyway, so it was to direct, it was a comment to staff saying that there was exhibit with the pedestrian connectivity or bicycle connectivity. So, after the whispering, then you saw Pete try and bring up the slide of where those are. And so, to my knowledge, that's all there was, so.
Yeah, so...
But I just wanted to acknowledge that the record is closed and we are right now in the appeal period, so the item is still open.
And so, in, in a request, there is a provision, OCMC 1750-260, "Any request for reconsideration must be received by the Planning Division within 10 days when the decision in question was rendered, must specifically describe the alleged misunderstanding or misinterpretation. It's warranted where the city's decision indicates decision maker failed to understand or consider certain relevant facts in the record or misinterpreted the application in some material way." So, we'd have to look at those questions. But one of the key things as we...
Could you read this code section again?
Sure, it's 1750-260.
260, okay.
And one of the immediate concerns I'd have about reconsideration is 120-day rule. As, as you know, we've got to make decisions within 120 days. And if the Planning Commission were to reconsider it and open it up for any additional evidence, there would be, you know, required notice and all the rest. And I, I would want to check in with staff about where we are in the 120-day deadline before we, you know, go too much further to...
And I don't know what the answer to that is yet, but my computer's booting up. So, I could tell you later in the hearing what, where we are with the 120.
And just for the record, if we went over the 120, what is triggered?
It would trigger the ability of the applicant to sue the city in circuit court mandamus. And in that situation, should the...
You just spoke Latin or English.
Basically, it's a lawsuit at circuit court where they come into the circuit court and say, "Court, they have exceeded the deadlines, tell them to approve us." And in that situation, things flip. Here, before the Planning Commission and the city, the applicant has a burden to show that it is entitled, entitled to the decision. It's got the burden to prove it. In circuit court, it changes and the city has to show why the applicant shouldn't be granted the, the decision, granted the approval. In addition, there are financial penalties should the court order the decision made. And I forgot the specifics of it, but there is, there could be significant liability on the city as well. And so, that, that's basically what happens if, if we were to exceed the 120-day deadline.
Okay, it's just been a while since anybody's actually enunciated, it is 120, and so what? But there is a so what?
It's not a so what.
Well, I understand, but it's been probably 10 years since anybody's ever asked that question, I think.
I'm trying to remember if we've had him at, God, I'm sorry, I'm trying to turn it off.
Oh, yeah, time's up. Or your fries are done, one of the two.
I can't remember a time.
I like the latter. I'll go with the fries are done.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know...
Yeah. The other thing, the issues that were raised, as I'm looking at it, well, you know, they may be, again, just heard it for the first time, five, 10 minutes ago, maybe procedural regularities that could be brought up to the city commission? Don't know for certain, really have to dig into that a little bit more to make sure. And so, you know, certainly to the extent they're, well, you know, I, I just don't know, we'd have to dig into it a little bit more.
Okay, and I guess the question I'd have is, since the city commission has it for action...
We're in the appeal period, so if we receive an appeal, then they will.
That's right, it was a different thing that they've got, okay. So, okay.
Different thing.
So, we still theoretically have control of it, because it hasn't passed on to any other authority at this point.
We did a notice of decision with the Planning Commission's decision, and that's the last thing that's been done.
Right, so, so we are, we are still theoretically the authority of...
Well, hasn't the record been closed on that? And if it has, do we have control over it?
Yeah, because the 10 days is after the notice of decision.
Say again?
The 10-day recall.
I think there's a 14-day appeal period, but he's talking about the 10-day reconsideration. Excuse me.
Right. So, do you know when the notice of decision was made?
It's pulling up right now.
Okay, sorry, we're...
That's okay. That's all right. So, are you looking up the decision?
November 15th.
So, November 15th...
I thought it was November 15th.
It is November 15th.
And if that's the case, we're outside the 10 days that would allow the Planning Commission to reconsider.
Do you count holidays?
Is it calendar days or business days?
That's always, when it's 10, it's usually business days. 14 is usually calendar days.
But we, in good faith, made a decision based on findings that came before us.
Right, but his argument is that we were given biased findings.
Biased findings?
Yes.
No, biased information.
Biased information that made us not make a finding based on all the facts in front of us.
So, under our code, 1.04070 says, "Except when otherwise provided, time within an act, within an act is required to be done shall be computed by excluding the first day and including the last day unless the, unless the last day is Sunday or a holiday, in which case it also shall be excluded." So, it doesn't specifically address holidays, except... So, basically, what it says is, you know, how you exclude the day, the first day, and include the last day, unless the last day is Sunday or a holiday, in which case it also be excluded and essentially extend another day.
I thought there was something in our code that talked about calendar days and business days, but...
So, if we exclude the first day, that makes it the 16th, which makes it the 26th, which is a Sunday, which means today is the 10th day.
If you don't include the first day, if you include the 16th, so 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, which is a Saturday.
Right, it doesn't say Saturday is not a Sunday.
So, if you include the last day but not the first day.
Right.
So, it's Saturday.
You know, we don't have to, we don't have to deny an application. All we have to do is just go through the process that we've been going through the last several months on this. We just drag it out to the point where nobody knows what's going on.
Well, I think we do know what's going on.
I don't.
Okay, well, we'll get you, we'll get you up to speed.
I appreciate it, and don't be biased about doing it.
I'm not going to be biased.
I would say, based on the count, that it's beyond our ability to recall it at this point, based on our code. Is that, I mean, missed it by that much?
I think so, you know, and like I said, this is the first time we've, I think this is the first reconsideration request we've, we've had at the Planning Commission.
Yes, we've had them at staff level, that's it, that I can think of.
All right, well, if it's calendar days, then I think we don't have authority. If it's business days, then we do, clearly.
We can take a look throughout the hearing and see what we can find.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to decide what we're going to do?
I would think so.
It probably wouldn't hurt to, to do it.
That would be my recommendation.
Without you making a decision or telling us.
Wait, wait, could, hold on, we are still, hang on, we are still talking to our attorney. Hang on, hang on.
Let me just say, let me make my request.
Please, please, hang on, hang on.
I'm trying to make a procedural objection.
Hang on just a moment.
Please don't vote until you...
We are not doing anything, because I can't get you to stop talking.
I'm stopped, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, what I was suggesting is that, yes, we need to be thinking about a motion of some sort. I do have another slip here, I'm assuming it's involving the same thing. Nod?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I guess here's my question to you. I, I don't, is this starting to turn into some kind of a debate? Is it, is it, is it appear to you that that's what's going to happen there?
It appears to me we've got a request before the, the Planning Commission. To the extent, you know, somebody wants to be heard on it, on a procedural matter, probably makes sense to allow, allow that before decisions.
I'm not suggesting at all that, I'm just, I don't want this to turn into a debate on something that we've already adjudicated and made a decision on, and then it's the, you know...
Or can't make another decision on, and it's going to be... Time is time, then...
It's going to be the he said, she said thing. I'm just, I'm concerned about that.
Denise, I'm concerned about the fact that it is turning into a debate after the fact, after we've made our decision. That's what I'm concerned about.
Yes, well, we, we do have an item on our agenda for items that are not currently on the agenda, so I think that that is, leaves us with very broad discretion. We have yet to refuse anyone to come up and speak, and I wouldn't want to start now at this late date in our tenure as a Planning Commission from time immemorial when Planning Commissions have existed here in Oregon City. So, I think it's, I think it's only fair that we have a request, let's hear it. I will ask our esteemed staff over to my right to keep the, try to keep a lid on this, because I, I'm just feeling a little uneasy. I'm just, I don't know about how the guys are feeling, but it sounds like we're all feeling a little uncomfortable.
But it is a legal issue, not a planning issue. We decided the planning issue. Now, the legal issue has to be decided by our attorney with an opinion.
Or something, yeah, so there's still...
And I want to hear from Mike.
Yes, so we're going to have Mike, Michael come up, come on up, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Griff, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Michael Robinson. I'm an attorney for the applicant that Mr. Nacita referred to. Thank you for taking my off-agenda testimony. So, I appreciate Mr. Kabeisman knowing so quickly that there was a provision for reconsideration. I wasn't aware of that. One of the nice things about our age is I could just pull it up and look at it. So, I don't think the Planning Commission has authority to act on this at all. What your code says is reconsider, it tells you what, oh, here it is. "Any request for reconsideration," and I'm now reading out of 1750-260, "any request for reconsideration must be received by the Planning Division within 10 days when the decision in question was rendered, and must specifically describe the alleged misunderstanding or misinterpretation referring to an earlier provision in the code." And then it says, "If the request is granted, the Community Development Director shall notify all parties that the decision will be reconsidered." So, I think what that says is, if someone does want reconsideration, assuming they're within the timeframe and they meet the requirements of the code, they make the request to your Planning Division, who decides reconsideration, and then gives parties notice. And I think that's a fairly written provision, so that what happened tonight doesn't happen, which is someone appears ex parte and talks to a body that's already rendered the decision. And that, that concerns me, it should concern you as well. So, my only point was, not only do I, I don't think this body has any authority to make any decision, period, but I don't think a request is properly made under the plain language of your code to this body. I think it goes to the Community Development Director. The other thing, and I, I guess I can talk with Mr. Kabeisman, Ms. Turway offline about this, I want to be certain and clear that the discussion tonight is not part of the record in front of the city commission. I don't believe that it should be, but I'm going to just have that conversation. I think it's, anyway, I wanted to read the code section, so you were aware of my reading, because I think it, it goes to the Planning Division, not this body. Thank you for your time tonight.
You, you just read that, though, right?
Yes. And it, it does say that any request should be submitted to the Planning Division. You know, it doesn't clearly delineate who the decision maker is about the request for reconsideration, so, you know...
Well, it's, it's just saying making the request, it's not saying that anybody in the Planning Division has the ability to reconsider the request, it just says you have to make, you have to do the ask.
And I think part of the difficulty with this body making that reconsideration is, I think typically, decision issues and 10 days start and we get to the point, you know, the only reason it's close to 10 days in this case is, you know, because of, you know, in most cases, it's going to be at least 14 days between when the decision's made and when the ask is made, you know, because there was a delay in getting the decision out. So, it's going to be awful tough in most circumstances for the Planning Commission to hear a request for reconsideration. So, you know...
I would disagree with that, because if, if it's within 10 days to get to Laura and her staff, that there was an error and we think you need to bring it up, then that clock has been met. And whether it's 14, you know, the, the next meeting three or four days later, or because we didn't have one at Christmas and it's 28 days later, it's still within the time, it's still a timely reconsideration request.
And I understand that, I guess the other point is that, once a decision's made, the request for reconsideration, there's no indication it stops the appeals clock ticking. And if appeal gets filed and you've got a reconsideration filed, it, it gets messy.
We've got some procedural mumbo jumbo going on.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, we need to discuss about how to handle this situation in the past. But I guess the first question we probably ought to decide is, is this request timely?
Right, and that, that, to me, that's what, I mean, if the answer is no, because it's calendar days and not business, then it's moot for us. Doesn't mean an appeal can't go forward, but the rules prohibit us from doing anything, because Saturday was the 10th day.
Right.
So, what you need to find out is whether there's any indication, whether it's calendar or business. And if it's ambiguous, then I think we need to make a decision.
The more restrictive provision of the code would apply.
Yeah.
But has the, has the, has the appeal been made within that 10 days, whether it's Saturday or Monday?
Well, it's not an appeal, it's a request.
Okay, request.
Request for reconsideration.
But that's got to be made to the...
Planning Division.
Planning, and has it been done?
No.
It's been done verbally here?
Right.
Okay, so is this moot?
We're not the, we're not the Planning Division.
But we don't know whether it's business or calendar. If it's business, then today and tomorrow are within the 10 business days, because of the holiday.
So, if he were to make that request tomorrow to them, he would have met the...
The business day requirement, yeah.
So, we have to make that determination.
As to whether...
He's, he's looking in the code.
Yeah.
Usually it's business days.
Can we circle back to this at the end of the hearing?
Where are we on the 120-day clock?
I have no idea. Since I don't, the planner would know, and he's not here, and I don't know.
Well, just call Pete up tonight and just ask him, right? He's probably...
I know your mouth is full of chili, doesn't it?
He's probably at home, just, you know, chilling and kicking back, no.
I would imagine that for the 120, that includes the final city decision, and we know that your decision is appealable to the city commission. So, I couldn't imagine that there would be a lot of time to come back to Planning Commission, reconsider, and then go.
See, every other night we had Planning Commission, I brought my entire tote bag, and I had this original staff report, which would have told us exactly where it was.
Because if you issue a new decision, then you have, the new appeal period starts from that date that the new decision is, so your 120 is getting pushed on.
Right.
Yeah.
We don't know, but I suspect that this would have significant 120-day implications.
Well, I think, I believe that that was extended on a number of occasions, as I recall.
It was, it's just normally, generally, they're not extended past when is necessary for...
Right, right, they generally aren't.
Can that 120 days be extended by somebody other than the applicant?
Only the applicant controls that.
Has to be the applicant.
Yep.
So, this is a yes or a no, not a verbal answer? So, is this a point-of-order question?
Jim?
Is this a point, I'm asking you to nod your head yes or no. Is it a point-of-order question?
Would, would you like to come up and get...
No, 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 I, I'm asking the question, is this a point-of-order question? Because you've had your, you've had your time...
Okay, that's the question, yeah.
Time to get up and talk, so...
It's a procedural, so I'd say yes. Because that's what gets us in trouble, is procedure.
Procedurally, if the planning director is here this evening, does raising it verbally at a Planning Commission meeting, at which the planning director is present, constitute making the request to the Planning Division? Or can I take out a piece of paper and write my request and deliver my handwritten request to the planning director? Would that constitute delivering it to the Planning Commission, Planning Division?
Well, you would have done it by Saturday, apparently, from what they're counting.
Well, that's if we do business or whatever.
Yeah. Did you find something?
Found no further guidance. You know, all we have is, oh, about the deadline, I mean, the holidays.
This will be the last point, and then we're going to circle back to this, because we have other things.
Why don't we get going on the other things? We'll continue work at this and, and circle back.
Okay. Everybody take a deep breath and breath. All right, this evening, we have two public hearings on our agenda. And basically, I'm just looking at, seeing the audience here, because I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is figure out if I can just read this once and it'll be okay.
Yeah, probably.
And I don't have to read it before the second public hearing, so, okay.
The thing to do is read it once before everything and then ask before the second if anybody wants it rewritten.
Yes, that's what I was, that's what I was going to do. All right, so on tonight's agenda, we have, as I stated, two public hearings. And I will go through the fabulous quasi-judicial land use hearing script, and if you know it, just mouth along, you know, we might as well, we all probably know it by heart by now. All right, so tonight on our agenda, we have SP 17127, CU 1703, BR 1710, BR 1712, and BR 1713. Staff report has been prepared for each of these provisions and has been made available to the public seven days prior to the first public hearing. Staff report identifies approval criteria that apply to each of the applicant's proposals. Staff has analyzed the criteria which is contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart. I love just pointing to the chart, because now it's there. For those of you who weren't here, it was gone, so I couldn't point to it, it was gone. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed anyway. I'll get them and I'll look at them, so we'll, we'll get everybody on. You should fill out your address on the card, so the city can notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed towards the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in that record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of that record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits to be used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, please submit copies to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to the staff, they will be not, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional testimony or evidence, or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence, must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision in which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for consideration of the city commission, or Luba, or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. I've already stated all the files, but before we open the public hearing, does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? Have you gentlemen visited the site? I'll start with Meisstein, colleague to my left.
No, no, I haven't, but I'm familiar with the area.
I visited the site the day before Thanksgiving.
Okay. Tomas?
Nope.
This is the PA, this is the school, right?
Yes.
I am very familiar with the site, because I work for Oregon City School District as a, not as a primary employer, but as a...
a, not as a primary employer, but as a significant employer.
Okay, and...
I do feel I can make a neutral decision.
Neutral decision, yes. And I am very familiar with the site. I happen to receive a notice of land use action as a representative of an organization that owns property adjacent. I did not need to go on the site, and I have had no ex parte contacts regarding this particular application. So does anyone in the audience wish to question any of the commissioners about the disclosures? Okay, hearing none. We will, oh, just for the record, unless otherwise established, we will have the staff report, we will have public testimony. Five, 15 minutes for the applicant, and I'm going to take some prerogative here. Is there anybody here from a recognized neighborhood association in that area? Because we will give you some additional time. Three minutes for individuals and five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. There will be questions of staff, discussion, and possibly a motion. And we would ask that during all of these public hearings that we all just be really nice people and reconsiderate of everybody else who's here. And we would like to have no demonstrations such as applause, cheering, or display of signs or other sort of disruptive behavior, but it depends on who you ask. And because one's person's disruptive behavior may not be another person's disruptive behavior. All right, so we will ask for the, I'll go ahead and open it, and we'll ask for the staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair McGriff and Commissioners. My name is Kelly Reed, Planner with Oregon City. So this application is for a new modular building at Gardner Middle School. They've applied for conditional use, site plan design review, and three variances.
Give it a second.
The school is located at 180 Ethel Street. Overall site plan is shown here, and then I have a zoomed-in version later. But we're really looking at the back of the school building here. And that, in aerial photo, a new modular building is being proposed, being proposed to be placed right in this location. It's about 1,800 square feet, and it contains two classrooms.
So you have your little thingy?
Oh, you're not seeing this, are you?
No, we can't see it on ours.
Can I have the mouse?
So I think you were pointing to it, but it doesn't, I don't know why, it's so weird it doesn't show up on ours.
Is it the other mouse?
It's Mouse B.
There we go. Okay, can you see that on your screen?
Yes.
Okay. So we're looking right in this location. And you may remember, I think most, a lot of you were on the Planning Commission back in 2013, when the school district applied for a very similar conditional use and variance in site plan design review for this structure right here, which is also a modular building that contains eight classrooms. So here's zoomed-in site plan. The proposed classroom would displace a few parking spaces. It would be surrounded by a chain link fence with some landscaping, with covered walkway from the existing school building. And the current site is overparked, if you will. They are well above the minimum parking, and so the displacement of these parking spaces doesn't affect the, meeting the standards for, for that minimum parking required.
How many are being displaced?
Oh, it's in the staff report. I think it's about eight to 10.
It's eight. But they're, but they're also handicap spaces, so they're wider.
Yes. And so this is the modular building that was built in 2013. And the new modular building seems to be designed similarly, with similar materials and colors. Here's a photograph of the area where that would be placed on the back of the school. There are some of the ADA parking spaces there that would be displaced and replaced elsewhere. And then the, the site plan shows the landscaping that would be surrounding the building. Building elevations, similar materials to the other modular building that was recently built. The applicant has requested variances for some of our building design standards, which we'll talk about later. And so all the code criteria that was referenced in the staff report is shown here. The site is in the single-family dwelling district R6, which is why it's a conditional use in a residential zone. And then we've had various other chapters which we've reviewed, which I'll go into. First, the conditional use criteria. Schools are a conditional use in the residential zone. This school use previously by the Planning Commission has been found to be suitable for the area. The site has ample room for this building. And the building is being placed in a, in a less visible area of the site. You're not really able to see much of it from any public right-of-way. And so the findings really in the staff report are that the character of the surrounding area won't be significantly altered by adding this structure to the site. I'm not going to read all of this off to you, but you're, I'm sure you're familiar with it, and the findings are all in the staff report for conditional uses. And there are a few variance requests that go along with this as well. The first one is to code within the institutional and commercial building standards section of our site plan design review code, which requires that buildings be built up to the front setback or within five feet of that. In the past, for the last conditional use request by the school district, they requested a similar variance because the building is set back quite far from any property line being placed behind the building. And staff recommends approval of this, again, for the same reasons as last time, that it's impractical to place the building close to those public rights-of-way, given that the only right-of-way with a front lot line is really a stub street, two dead-end streets that sub into the, into the site. For the second variance, these are design standards, also within the institutional and commercial building section of that code. These require variation in building massing, minimum wall articulation, and transparency on the front and sides of the building. And so the design of this structure, it's a modular unit, doesn't meet these. And staff, you know, looked to the past Planning Commission actions on this, and also, again, recommended approval, as we did last time, for, for the larger modular building. And really, the impact of not meeting these standards is lessened by the placement of the building, it's not, it's not highly visible. And the school district, I think, can talk about the nature of the building and the future plans for the site. The last variance request is to the non-conforming chapters, 1758040. This is not a non-conforming use, but it is considered a non-conforming site, because it doesn't meet a lot of our current standards for landscaping and for pedestrian circulation. And when non-conforming sites are expanded, our code requires that if a certain level of, or after a certain threshold, and it's an investment of $75,000 or more into the site, that non-conforming upgrades need to go along with that expansion. And so this does constitute a project that's greater than $75,000 worth of expansion. And typically, you know, at a staff level, when we, we process a lot of site plan design review applications, this does get triggered, and applicants do, are required to upgrade elements of their site. The school district has asked that we don't require this of them, and staff's recommending denial of that. There are two options in the code for non-conforming upgrades. One is to upgrade items with the cost limited to 10% of the total investment in the site, total project cost. And that project cost that's been provided to us by the school district is $300,000. And so their maximum 10% investment in non-conforming upgrades would be about $30,000. It's unknown if they did upgrade the items that are non-conforming, you know, how far they'd get. They could be able to get there with only spending, you know, $10,000, $20,000. We don't know enough now, but we know that they would be limited to $30,000. The second option that applicants have for upgrading non-conforming elements is to upgrade everything, so there's no cost limit, but they have five years to do so. In the first option, they do the upgrades along with the current construction project that's under consideration. The second option gives them five years. And so staff's recommendation is that the applicant choose one of those options and provide non-conforming upgrades, one way or the other.
Why do they get to choose?
I was wondering.
The code allows them to, allows applicants to choose which option, normally.
What if we have a decision, what if we have some findings and some suggestions about what we think they should do?
You're, the Planning Commission, you have more authority than, than staff does, you know, when we normally give the choice. So I would think that that's something that the Planning Commission can consider.
We could discuss it, okay.
Yeah.
Schools checking.
Yeah.
I'm reading your mind, Tom.
We don't have a lot of authority lately.
So the variance criteria generally requires that impacts are mitigated, that there are no practical alternatives, and that the variance conforms to the comprehensive plan. The applicant has provided findings, and staff agrees with their findings for the first two variances. And before that third one, we can't really see that any impacts are being mitigated. And it, you know, it doesn't really conform to the comprehensive plan. This is required of all applicants that meet that threshold. And so that's behind our recommendation for denial. And I just want to show a couple of the non-conforming elements. Pedestrian circulation is, is one of them. I think there are a lot of entrances to the site that are not connected by an actual ADA pathway, or even any sort of pavement at all. And this is just one of the pedestrian accessways that comes from a cul-de-sac, I believe, near the school, allowing for students to take a little shortcut. Then there are various other areas of the site that don't have pedestrian circulation, you know, five-foot-wide paved accessways. And then the other element really is just perimeter parking lot landscaping, which requires trees and shrubs. And for the most part, the school, this school, this site only has ground cover for their circular, sorry, for their perimeter parking lot landscaping. And one of their arguments was that the topography in some places actually, I'll use the mouse, actually, so you guys can see it. The topography makes trees and shrubs difficult in some of the areas. And, you know, staff doesn't dispute that, but still feels that non-conforming upgrades of some form are warranted.
Are those, in that last picture, the green vegetation, is that the grass that's weeds?
It's grass that's not out of control.
And it looks like some morning glory, but, you know.
And so staff's recommendation is approval with conditions, with the exception of the third variance request for non-conforming upgrades. And also, just for one clarification, we did want to clarify, we looked at our non-conforming code, and it does look like that the applicant has the authority to choose within the list, meaning we don't have the authority to limit what they choose within that list for non-conforming upgrades.
But we could propose a third or a fourth, or a modification of one or the other?
The code specifically states the applicant may choose one of the two following options for making the required improvements. Option one...
It says "may."
Right, it's the applicant's choice.
We don't have much authority lately.
But if it said the applicant shall choose, then it will be only those. But "may" means there could be alternatives.
That's right. I'm following the Ed Sullivan rule of the "may" and the "shall." I remember that very distinctly.
I can tell you the Court of Appeals has stepped away from that prescriptive use of "may" and "shall," and say they've got to be read in context. But anyway, why don't we hear from the applicant?
I have questions.
Yes, we have some questions of staff. We're not calling, calling for the public testimony just yet.
And Chair, may I add one?
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks. The first variance request for the five-foot setback, variance from the five-foot setback, the applicant requested that, that, that you grant that variance and apply it to future buildings on the site. And staff is recommending that you grant it now, but not for future buildings, and that those be handled on a case-by-case basis.
I think the law is very clear that we can't bind ourselves to future actions. Am I correct, Bill?
You're getting that workout tonight. You know, under some provisions you can, such as if there's a master plan, could you...
We might under that. This is not a master plan. This is a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought. Bob, questions?
No, not this time.
Vern?
No.
Tom?
Nope.
Daniel?
Yes.
First, on your eight conditions of approval. Condition of approval one, I think you're missing some words.
Uh-oh.
Because you have the covered pedestrian walkway to demonstrate the width of the walking is at least five feet.
Width of the...
Just those darn computers.
Yeah.
Width of the walkway, probably?
Or walking path, or whatever, but...
We've been hacked.
Yeah. It's like, oh, you can only walk if you can take five footsteps. And six, you have that they can utilize paint or a physical between the westernmost portion of the development.
Physical...
Barrier, I believe is missing. Yeah. And then I'm curious as to what the value of three is. I mean, this is a modular building that's less than the height that the building is being set against. What landscaping are you going to be putting around it? And why do you need to shroud mechanical stuff when it's going to be on a roof?
I think this is referring to the ground-mounted equipment that is proposed to be shielded with landscaping and the...
Or screened?
Yes. And that there's a certain amount of screening, and it wasn't clear from the applicant's submittal that there was really enough plants that would actually screen that to standard.
Mm-hmm.
And then I guess, can you go back to the picture of the close-up of the thing that shows like the...
Well, it doesn't show where the mechanical equipment is.
Right, I just, when I, when you were clicking through it, it looked like the circles were trees. And I'm like...
They are trees. Those are trees.
So I thought they were trees.
The large circles are trees and the little ones are shrubs.
The large circles are trees.
So we're requiring them to cut into their pavement to put trees up that the modular building could come down within four or five years, and then they would have to refill the holes so we can shield them against, if you go back two more pictures, that people won't have to look at the, nope, nope, there. I mean, people already look at an absolutely blank facade. Why are we requiring them to put trees up in front of the building? I can see we're requiring them to put trees up under the, under, you know, the two options, like along the fence line of the property. But to stick trees up right against the building... But to stick trees up right against the building when the building itself will provide the variance in depth and articulation for the view of the people that would be even looking at it from 120 yards away? I'm not sure what the value of trees are. I mean, I can, I can see putting, you know.
That's a big, that's a big question. What's the value of trees? You mean the values of trees in those locations?
The applicant proposed that landscaping, it's not written as a condition. That landscaping is proposed, and it appears that the landscaping will serve multiple purposes, one of which would be to screen the mechanical equipment.
I'm just looking at it as a.
Where's it going to go?
As a taxpayer of the school district and saying, boy, $30,000 could really be used someplace else than putting a tree, and it's going to be cut down in four years when they move the building and rebuild.
You can't cut it down.
Yeah, you can. You can cut down any tree if you want to. You just have to mitigate.
Please don't say that on the record. I already have, I'm already having a conniption fit about it.
So I'd.
Come to Miami, Rick.
Okay, so. What was the other one? That's, that's it, Tom, for now.
Well, I didn't have the same question about condition number one, but I guess my question is, what is sufficient documentation regarding the covered pedestrian walkway to demonstrate the width of the walking? The correction is at least five feet wide. What's, what's sufficient demonstration?
Showing it on the plans and labeling it, essentially, on the construction plans.
Yeah, right now, in their submittal, it was just a line with hatchbacks.
Well, maybe it should just say that, because that, to me, that, that's a lot of area open for interpretation.
And shall submit plans regarding the covered pedestrian.
I, I think that would be.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, they're going to have to do it anyway, so.
Clearly delineated plans, I think, would be very specific and allow for no, hmm, what does that mean? I don't know what that means.
Oh, and where are they moving the ADA walkway? Do we have that?
Where the ADA parking space is, where are they getting moved to?
Over here.
You gotta use your, use your mouse.
Over here, I believe.
And then where's the entrances to, is that a doorway right there, the two-door thingies? Okay.
Um, is, well, okay, the next, the question I have is for them, so that's fine. Thank you.
Could you go back to the aerial again? No, yeah, okay, that's the one thing. She, we were talking about not going to be visible, but it's going to be visible from somebody to somebody, but we don't have the bottom of that. So it's going to go there and could possibly be visible.
Yeah, like I said, it's like 100 yards to the nearest.
Okay, there's not a lot of somebodies there. Okay, we're good.
Yeah.
Then go back to.
I know those somebodies won't care, because that's the graveyard.
I know. They're very quiet. So I guess the other question I had was involving the doorway where they're going to be able to go in. I think you had that on, it showed on the, the side of the built, where you're showing where it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's one of those.
One more, go one more. There we go.
That's the, that, no, that doesn't look like the same door.
It is.
I thought it was, it looked like, I thought it was over on the side.
It'll be, the, what they were showing with the swing is the chain link fence enclosure.
Well, but it showed a door opening.
There.
That's almost invisible to the public, isn't it?
Yeah. See, there's a chain link fence enclosure.
Yes, I see that.
And that's.
So I was just trying to figure out what door they were going to be able to go into.
The one by the gym.
Yeah, where it said girls. That's what I thought. Okay. That, that, yeah, okay, that's good.
Great.
Okay, the, are we using the timer tonight? No, I don't know how to.
Fifteen minutes.
Where is it?
And I will be counting.
This one?
That's right. We get to go all night.
Oh, thank you. This is the musical interlude of the hearing?
Okay.
See, you're more fun than those other people. Wait, at least.
At least different than the other.
I can agree to difference. Oh, that's it, I can agree to difference.
Yes, we won't agree to difference. We won't, we won't mince words here for semantics. All right, come on up. And do we have any slips for this?
You got them already.
No, I only have the two.
What are all those, right there?
Those aren't slips, that's my stuff.
No, they're, I can't feel like.
No, she didn't.
Start the timer now.
Oh, sorry.
Still talking?
Start the timer now. Oh, I just tossed them. Okay. Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, Chairman McGriff and planning commission members. Chairperson, what do you like?
That's much better.
Okay. Having stuck my foot in my mouth already, I'll move along.
Oh, come on.
Rick Givens, planning consultant for the applicant. I think we, staff has done an admirable job on going through the conditional use finders. I'm not going to go into any of that. This is a project that's needed right now for the school. They need a couple more classrooms, and this is a temporary fix to provide for that. As you probably know, the school district plans to replace the entire Gardner Middle School facility at some point.
Yeah, you did tell us that.
The application states that. At any rate, the proposal would, you know, to move forward with that, obviously there would be a bond levy that would need to be passed, but the plan is to replace the entire campus. And this is a temporary fix to allow for the needs of the existing enrollment at the I think the primary issue that is up for discussion today is the variances. First of all, I would just note that when you adopted chapter 17.55, which requires a five-foot setbacks for new, for institutional buildings, you essentially made every school in the district, within city limits anyway, a non-conforming use, which means anytime they need to do anything, very seldom are you going to be able to comply with a five-foot setback requirement. And so it's a situation where there's no choice but to file for a variance. I think it's badly written code. I'm just going to make that comment as a planning consultant of 40 years of experience. I think there should be some exceptions granted for existing structures where it's clearly impossible to meet those criteria. The same would be true of the building modulation, articulation, glass, all those kinds of things make perfect sense for new structures, but they don't make sense when you're trying to retrofit existing facilities. And it puts the district in a position where they have to spend money on things that probably they'd rather spend money on providing education facilities. That's just my.
Hold on just a second, Rick. We're having computer issues.
Your time isn't counting.
You're not counting this time. It just says that the network connection's been disrupted.
Okay.
And is that said that as well on mine?
I know. So if I want to move the page, I can't, I can't do it.
We have a lot of badly written code. It is still recording. So we're hoping to get the page up, but it's still recording.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Move ahead. When we applied for the variant, for the variance relating to the modular buildings in the back, it was for the same situation. Couldn't put it within five feet, no practical way to do so. And so my point, when I first talked to staff, said, well, we got a variance approved. And they said, well, you didn't ask for it to be applied, you know, going forward on similar types of things. Please approve it going forward. We will agree to waive it for any future new building. That is not our intention to try to commit the city to anything else. But if we need to bring in another modular next year, do we really want to make the district spend another $5,000 or $10,000 writing a variance application and going through that process? Regarding the conditions of approval, I thank you for the correction to save me a little time in making the same points, Commissioner Maybe. I think the biggest concern I have is the condition relating to the non-conforming upgrades.
Which is number?
Number eight in the list here.
Of course, the one that's off my page. No, it's, go ahead.
This is a situation, again, where the school district was put into a situation where we're talking about non-conforming, becoming non-conforming because the city changed code provisions. And $75,000 is a big threshold for a single-family home. It's a drop in a bucket on a school. You can't do anything for $75,000. And suddenly you have to bring the entire school campus into compliance, or at least up to 10% of the value of the project. We asked for a variance to that. Staff is recommending that the variance be denied. I'm going to ask for it again, simply, I'm going to go as taxpayer here. I'm a taxpayer in the Oregon City as well. I just don't think it's wise to make you, make a district spend money on this when the whole campus is going to be torn down and rebuilt in five years.
So you're either here as the consultant, or you're here as a taxpayer.
I can be here, I can be here as many hats as I want, Commissioner.
Okay, so I'm just, I just want to.
Then you're returning to three minutes.
Yeah, I just want to be clear which.
Well, I'll get another three.
Which, what we're doing here.
At any rate, that's off, that's just my personal opinion, but it does relate to the request. Be that as it may, it is clearly our choice as applicant as to which of those options we wish to do. And I've been, I don't know at this point. We need to look at what the costs are. We haven't even looked at how many various things would need to be changed to make the, comply with all of the new code requirements. So we'll need to look at that and see which one makes fiscal sense. Other than that, we agree with the findings in the staff report. We would ask again that the variance to the five-foot setback standard be granted going forward, except for if the building is replaced. Frankly, I don't know how you could even do a new building, because how do you couldn't get into the side if you put something within five feet of those ends of Ethel Street and Hood Street? But would ask that it be, in case we have to put a modular here again next year, you know, I would ask, we don't have to go through that again. Beyond that, just make myself available for questions.
Gentlemen, just jump in.
Okay. What is with putting the building where it's being located, moving the ADA over, what's that going to do for getting buses around the building? Because they queue up to do, you know, pick up students, and now you're restricting their ability to maneuver.
There's still 28 feet of room in between, because we're taking out the parking stalls on the other side. And so there's still 28 feet of room, which is more than adequate to get the buses through there.
Okay.
I don't think there's a problem there. We've got, we just relocated the two ADA stalls from, you know, they're just moved from one corner of the building to the other.
Yes, but you took out three and only put back two.
Not ADA, I think there were only two.
Yes, you look at the picture.
Now, that may be, I, I'm not.
Can you go back to the pictures?
It's, we have more parking and more ADA than is required by code, anyway, at any rate.
Rick has the.
I'm going to keep. Which way do I go here? The aerial photograph?
Keep going.
I can see him there.
Yeah, you can see there's three ADAs, but there's actually a picture of the front of the building. One more, there. One, two, three.
You are correct. I would go with my.
Well, one's probably van accessible.
Well, there's still three.
Yeah.
And the ADA parking, number of them required is building code, and so typically we don't look at, we don't have criteria for that in our code.
We should.
The building official, upon building permit. And he weighs in during pre-application conferences and such, so the applicants know ahead of time. But we don't typically look at that.
All right, so you have as many as you need? You believe?
We believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a problem.
Okay, so buses are going to still be able to get through.
Allegedly.
Well, if they can't get through a 28-foot hole, they shouldn't be driving. The, I guess my question is, and this is the same one that, that the school hears every time, is they heard when they put the other modulators in, is just two classrooms, and you said, well, maybe they're going to come back next year and need two more, and maybe two.
No, I didn't say that. I said that if, if it becomes necessary. There's been no discussion of that by the school district. That is my supposition.
Okay, well, it gets back to our continual grousing at the school of, you've got four buildings, why do you have to keep expanding modulators? Why don't you just use one of your four buildings to it? King, and, you know, park, I mean, the, the inner city is being divested of schools, and it's, I'm, okay, I'm pontificating, and it's not relevant to what we're doing, so I'm going to just stop now.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
I do it every now and then.
I know. I've noticed.
The, what, what grades are these for? Do you know what they're programmed for, sixth or seventh, eighth?
Seventh and eighth, I believe, is what they will be doing.
All right.
Do you have anything?
No questions for Rick.
So tell me, 2013, what circumstances have changed that we're back here again asking for the same thing?
Enrollment of the school has increased.
So what I'm getting at is, you know, some prognostication into the future. Okay, we're going to need one now, we're going to need one later, or we're just kind of doing this on a case-by-case. I'm just trying to understand what is necessitating doing this again, and then there's this, there's an implied, we might do this again. I don't want to waste anybody's money either, so I'm just, I'm just trying to get in the head and understand.
Well, you have to understand that I am the consultant to them, and I am going with the projects that they have brought to me. The consultant says it could be a possibility that one has to happen again. If it does, even though they're paying me to write variances and they're paying the city to review them, I think it's kind of a waste of time and money when the circumstances are exactly the same. That was my only point. To my knowledge, there is no plan to put more modulators here. What happened was that the enrollment went up, they're very tight, unspaced, they need a couple more classrooms. And school districts, you know, have limited funding available to solve problems. The idea of using other schools, that's a bigger discussion than you can deal with at this kind of level, where you're looking at meeting the immediate needs for this school year, you know, staffing an entire new school or something, that's a bigger discussion than we can go with here.
We know. Unfortunately, we meet at the same time they do. We're trying to get a joint meeting together so we can have an informal discussion with the school board.
That would be a good idea, I think.
I think it's a fabulous idea, but thank you.
And perhaps we can talk about fixing some code issues as well over there.
No, we're not going to do that right at that. That's not, that's not for the school board to make the decision about. But anyway, no, thank, thank you. Larry, do you want to come up, please?
Good evening, Chairman McGriff and commissioners. I'm Larry Didway, Superintendent for Oregon City Schools. Thanks for welcoming us here tonight. Director of Operations Wes Rogers sends his greetings, and fortunately, he's unable to attend tonight. He's in Montana due to the death of his mom, so, so I'm, I'm his replacement tonight. But happy to be here, and I, and I really just came to say thank you for your consideration, and we are eager to see this approved hopefully tonight. We're wanting to have our teachers and kids in those classrooms as soon as possible, and we're very hopeful that we can have them settled in that, in those rooms when they return from winter break.
So you've already got two teachers hired?
We, we already have the teachers and the kids in the building.
Where are they at?
They, they are in rooms that are, a te, one teacher might be in a classroom, but they'll have a prep period, and so the, they are rotating from room to room. It's, it's not ideal.
Yeah, I know. I was the sub for them one day.
Yeah.
Chasing that. Okay, everybody, let's move to the next.
So the, so the, so you had some questions that we're not going to trouble Mr. Givens with those, because that's beyond his pay grade?
I, I guess, my big concern is that, you know, that we're going to end up in this rolling modular thing, like, okay, it's Gardner this year, and next year it's, it's Ogden, and, and, you know, it's, oh, it's just another year or two until the bonding gets, gets, you know, the planning gets done, so we can start to, you know. That's, that's my concern about making it a blanket, you know, five-foot thing. I mean, I understand completely the, the thing, but, you know, that's what a master plan's for, that we blanketly exclude the five-foot, and then you do your master plan, so.
No, they do the master plan, and then we consider it.
Well, as part of the.
Yeah, part of the approval. Yeah, part of the approval.
So what, I mean, you've prognosticated that you, you know, need to do changes. What, what assurances can we get that just isn't going to be an annual event?
I wouldn't be able to give you any assurance that, as you know, population is something that is not stagnant in any way. We, we work with Portland State University and the Population Study Center and they annually complete an update for our population forecasts and we have on a three-year variance, about a 2% variance on what they've actually projected. But that's for the total district. When you begin to peel that onion and start looking, it might look different at different grade levels or in some specific buildings or attendance areas. So for example, while our middle school enrollment right now is, is within 2% of what was projected, it is not balanced between Ogden and Gardner in the way it had been projected. So that's part of what you're seeing here. And then the other thing I would say is that as a community grows and while we are not forecasted to have aggressive growth at the, at those grade levels right now, over time, it is very common and really one of the very few tools that we have to expand an existing campus without creating a new cost center while, while the population is building to such that you can open up a new or third middle school. And that, that right now is not, we don't, we don't have a date forecasted for that, but you know that that will eventually have to happen.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. The potential for the $30,000 if you did option one, would, do you have an idea of what that would be like? Would you put trees around the perimeter or would you change your?
I'm not familiar enough with the, what the code requirements are to know what we would be applying it to, but what I would say is that we would do an analysis to make sure that we were being the best stewards of public funds possible. So if we could make the improvements with a minimal investment that we were confident would remain even with the renovation of that entire site, that would make sense. Otherwise, it would make more sense to put that off and do it when you're revamping the entire site. So either way.
Thanks.
I don't have any questions. I have some questions for staff, but.
And, and I'll, I'll take this opportunity also to share just that we, we do have a meeting scheduled with the City Commission on December 20th, I believe, between the school board and the City Commission. And we will be talking about these very issues and our enrollment projections.
We still want one. We're not the City Commission. We want one with the school board and I'll say this publicly, I want one. I've requested it.
You're welcome.
You finally said it.
No, I said it the last time.
Are you not speaking for the commission or are you speaking for yourself?
We had already recommended that two meetings ago and so I'm reiterating, yes. No, you weren't. If you were here, I'm reiterating that we would like, and I would like very much to have a meeting with the school board.
All right.
We're in the planning game. They're in the planning game, so the planning people should all be together.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any people?
Do we have anybody in the audience? I don't have any more slips for this item. Is anybody would like to testify on this matter? Okay, I think at this point, I won't close the record just yet because I have, they may want to respond. I have some, some more questions, Kelly. So would, I, I kind of leaning towards Damon's suggestion of maybe revising the condition regarding the land, even though they proposed it, I'd rather see the equipment, ground equipment screened, but I'd rather see these trees placed elsewhere. I mean, thinking about the larger picture, students deserve to be in a site that looks pleasant, is inviting, and I think the more that we can get them to do some plantings around the school in terms of the parking lot, to me would be reasonable. And I agree with you that putting them there and then the modular building goes out, what happens to the trees? And you know how I feel about trees. I think to correct, I don't believe that the schools are a non-conforming use in this particular zone. Maybe the, some of the facilities in terms of parking and that sort of thing, that is non-conforming, but the use is not non-conforming itself. So I just want to make that correction on the record because schools are not, they have non-conforming things. I mean, obviously, you know, that we've got broken parking lot, we've got this that's not working, that's not working and, you know, there's only so much that can be done. So I would, I would like to see, see if there's a way that we could maybe revise that and have some of this landscaping that's supposedly going to go around the building.
More generalized.
More generalized and, and be located elsewhere. With the exception of the screening of the equipment, I don't, you know, we shouldn't have to be, people shouldn't have to be looking at that. Is that possible?
One of the functions of the landscaping, one of the standards that it's, I think the reason it's being proposed is building, sorry, buffer between the parking lot and the building, which is generally required. We don't really see it necessarily everywhere on this site, but generally it's a five-foot buffer of landscaping between the parking lot and the building that's required. And so the applicant, I think, anticipated that and knew about that code requirement and proposed landscaping for that being one of the reasons. And then also for, and I want to correct myself, it's wall-mounted equipment that, that the trees would be screening. And it is true that the site already meets the overall 15% landscape requirement as it is.
Amazing what a football field will do for you.
Seriously?
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think it meets it from the standpoint, it's not a mix of shrubs and whatnot. It's a lot of grass and it's a bunch of weeds.
As far as the area is concerned, that, but, yes, so, so the landscaping is, is kind of there to provide, to meet multiple standards. Is that, is there anything I'm missing, Laura?
Well, I think the trees would be better placed elsewhere.
Yeah.
Instead of by a building that could be removed and then the trees go down, then that, to me, that's a waste of taxpayer money.
That, that will be removed if they get their rebuild of the campus.
Perhaps the planning commission can consider retaining the shrubs in that location and just relocating the trees themselves.
That's what I was suggesting. I, I don't, I don't have any issue with the shrubs, but the tree, the trees might be better, better sighted elsewhere.
Would planters in, would the greenery landscaping and planters meet the code?
Into the codes?
Because then you can just stick a forklift on them and move them around to some other location when you rebuild the buildings.
I, I think it could.
Speak.
You'd want to make sure you had clear findings as to, so that would be a modification because we have the specific requirements. So you'd want to make sure that you have the findings in there to support that modification.
Of course, the other thing is, is does the school care and they're okay with what they proposed? And if they do, then I'm not, I'm not going to second guess them. I just didn't want to have extra.
That's why I didn't close.
I just didn't want to have extra costs because of the code when it's, it's okay, we're going to do it anyway.
Mr. Johnson?
Along that line.
You need to scoot up and speak into the mic.
Along that line of Damon thinking and Chair Commish, I would like to get rid of cutting the asphalt out and putting up planters and trees in there. Use all that landscaping out around the perimeter in the parking lot area. And I just don't know how well trees and shrubs are going to grow in a 12-inch trench of asphalt.
Yeah, I would agree.
Forget that whole thing because the other, the side of the building already has no trees. I, this picture that we're looking at right there has, has no trees or no shrubs on it anyway.
No, that's because it was built long, long ago.
Move them all away from the building and put them out where they probably have better growing conditions and maybe cheaper planting about there or for whatever quantity you plant.
Maybe we can revise the condition that the shrubs can be in, should be in, could be in planters.
Could be.
That could be utilized, could be utilized elsewhere. Do you have, do you want to come back up? You have any, that's why I didn't close because I wanted to see if you had any comment about that.
Any rebuttal?
Not rebuttal. Just.
You're hitting me kind of cold with this. I think there are some code issues, as Kelly mentioned, that we would be in violation of if we did not have landscaping next to a parking lot. The trees also, I believe the landscape architect felt they were important to have there because of shading of the classroom, that kind of thing. But it's, we're willing to look at moving them elsewhere, but, you know, we don't want to do it willy-nilly at a planning commission hearing. We want a landscape architect to be involved as before and discuss what, where it can be moved and whether it makes sense.
Would you like us to continue this and then you can come back?
No, we need to get them, unless you want to have school at your, at your house.
It would, what we're looking at is something along the lines of, you know, allowing the same amount of trees to be placed at other locations along the, in the.
I understand what you're saying and it, it does make some sense. I'm just saying that we'd like you to give general direction to staff for consideration of that and let our landscape architect work that out with staff. Everybody understands what, stands what you're going for and.
That makes sense.
You know, that's all I'm going to say.
I, I just don't, I don't want to see money being wasted to plant some trees, as Vern said, in a 12-foot trench in a basketball parking lot where they're not going to really do much. They're, they're going to have a hard time. And we know that a lot of Oregon City is not, doesn't have great soil.
Well, I think, I believe the landscape architect had specifications for replacing the soil.
Sure, sure. I'm, I'm sure he does.
But then when, when you do the Gardner rebuild, you have to tear them out because they're next to where the building is.
To me, that's wasting money, is planting trees and then ripping them out because I don't see the school district or anybody else picking them up and moving them someplace else.
So I guess what I would put as a condition is that the school district and staff work on finding alternative locations for the trees if the school district wishes to do so. So if they say, this is where we want them, this is where we drew them and we're just too bad, then that's fine. But if they want to look at alternatives, that staff has the option for, for working with them to find alternative locations. Does that make sense to you and staff and?
It doesn't make sense to me because what's the point of doing it if they decide they don't want to do it and then we've made, we've made, we've made statements and findings about, we'd, we'd like to see the trees moved elsewhere.
But if the code says this is where there should be and they do not wish to put, they don't want.
We're just talking about the trees. The shrubs are going to stay there.
I understand that.
Shrubs are going to stay there.
But.
And they can be in planters.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that.
But if we get it at a point of impasse, couldn't the staff refer it back to us for final determination?
Nope, it won't get to impasse. They'll work, I have no doubt about that, but I just want to put the option out there and then if they.
Okay, come up with a condition for us and we'll get back to that based on what we just talked about. So, thank you, Rick. Okay, I'm going to, do you want any more rebuttal?
I think I'm done.
Okay, all right. Close the public hearing and get back to the commission. Okay, guys?
Well, first off, the first two variances I have no problem with. It's clear the five-foot setback and the articulation of the buildings are not applicable to this, to this situation. So it gets to the third variation, which is the option one, option two request and whether or not we're going to require it. As somebody who's been all over that building, went to that school and then that is, it is just a great big old field with the exception of the plantings they put around the last modular, so.
And I had a problem with that.
I'm, I'm not inclined to go with a variant, to approve the variance of the two options. And I think if they go with option two and they get their, their bond passed, then it'll become a moot point because there won't be a building there when option two happens. So they can save the money that way, too. So that, that's my point. Where I'm at, I was whatever we do with the trees around the building, the modular as an, as a condition and then leave everything else intact with the two typos.
Well, I'm only speaking for myself, but I, I notice there's two parallels here,
two separate political entities. And both of them have plans. Ours is a little bit more definite and that's a comprehensive plan adopted as policy by the public, meaning the City Commission and Planning Commission. But you'll note that our comprehensive plan, although it's ordinance, has a tendency to change and we change in response to the public's needs. Same thing with the school district. They're responding to the need of subdivisions that we approve that increases the population that requires modular schoolrooms. So they're in between a rock and a hard spot and all they're doing is just responding to the, the needs that are foisted upon them by decisions that are made by another agency, namely us. I don't have any problem with this application and I'm not in the business of telling, and I don't think this commission should be in the business of telling the planning, the school district how to spend money. They, they're at the, the big boy's table. They can spend money any way that they want to. This planning commission, as far as I'm concerned, is not going to make decisions based on how they spend their money. That's up to the public. That's a completely different venue as far as I'm concerned. So I support this application. I think some of the changes that we've talked about here have some valid points and I respect my colleagues in bringing up and mentioning them, but I don't think it's enough to quell this application and deny it. I'm, I'm going to vote for it.
Tom?
Go to Vern next, will you? I'm listening.
Tom?
I pass.
Okay, Vern?
Then I'll come back.
Nope, you had your chance.
Why, why did you jump all the way down? I do have something to say.
I'm generally in support of the position and what our suggestions were, I think can be worked out between the school district and the staff and I'm happy with the results.
Okay, now I'll say something.
I yield to the floor to Tom.
Damon?
Parliamentary procedure allows me to yield and I do, I yield to Tom.
Listening to all of your concerns.
Tom's the one that has, he's going to listen, listen to everybody.
I'm done, go ahead, Tom.
Listening to all of you and your concerns, I understand what you're all saying. I understand about the trees. Sometimes I think we focus a little too much on that building right there, but I agree with what Bob says. The thing that really hit me is, Rick, we don't often agree on some things. But I agree with you on the five-foot setback that in our coding, we've got some really bad codes that came along before some of us got here. I disagree with a lot of the coding. I hope sometime in the near future we'll be meeting with the City Commission and discussing some of those codes because I find a lot of them just really not conforming to my way of thinking. Anyway, Rick, I agree with it.
Damon?
I already said, I'm out. If, if Kelly's got a potential ninth, or would it be a modification of three?
I think it's a modification of three.
So we've understood your, or we understand your modifications. As you discussed earlier, it's to reword condition approval number one to clearly ident, delineate the pedestrian area, add walkway into condition approval number two, amend condition approval number six to add the word barrier and add a condition of approval number nine. And the, from my understanding, the addition would say something like the applicant may place the five trees proposed on the landscape plan elsewhere on the site and.
Subject to review with staff.
And with approval of the landscape architect. And place the remaining proposed landscaping within a planter.
Could you repeat that? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I can.
Are we ready to make an, an motion?
Just one brief correction. You said that walkway was in two, walkway was part of one.
So I have one, five, six and nine. Walkway, okay, perfect. I'm, I believe it's, are we removing condition approval number three?
No, we weren't removing it.
The, the trees are what is going to screen the wall-mounted equipment.
If they're deciduous trees, how are they going to screen the wall-mounted equipment?
Well, they'll be small for the first five.
Better not be arbor by day.
We can amend it just to say that the mechanical equipment will be screened and then the applicant can figure out what they want to do.
That's perfect.
So I had for a number for the ninth one, staff may approve alternate landscaping that equal or better meets the standards as long as shrubs are included around the building in some form.
In plant.
And five trees may be located anywhere on site. I, are, are your, is your intention to requi, to.
I, are, are your, is your intention to requi, to say it has to be planters, or to leave it flexible up to the landscape architect?
I think we just leave it flexible.
Oh, I don't, but that's just me.
I'm not, I don't want to require planters, is what I
Well, I'm just, we were suggesting that the shrubs could be in planters, that way they could use them someplace else when they're no longer needed there.
Absolutely.
Because that way then they don't get dug up and thrown away, which again, to me, is wasting money.
And we'll go back through the staff report and add a modification, so that the landscaping in that location can be in a planter, and that the trees can relocate offsite, too. So a lot of findings to support that condition.
Well, I don't want to say anywhere on the site, I think my suggestion would be that the trees be relocated where they would have, be, make this, make them meet the standards more than they currently are, so that they would be, you know, someplace that would, you know, if they're in the back 40, well
Well, they still screen from the residential in the back, so
Well, there's not too many residential in the back there.
But there's only five trees.
Yes, but anyway, so I, I guess I'm gonna comment in the fact that I concur with what Damon said. I have a, with, you know, it's not that I don't sympathize, but I have, I have a problem conditioning something in the future that we don't know about, that is not part of a master plan. I, I don't think that that's appropriate for the planning commission to be doing that, and it has, I'm just saying planning commission in general. If we had some sort of an overall plan, I think we'd have some assurity that something was gonna happen and that we could be looking at it. But I don't, you know, as much as I, again, sympathize, looking at it from a planning standpoint, I understand where Rick is coming from, but in terms of the planning commission hat, can't, I don't think we can do that, I don't think it's really, it's reasonable to condition something in the future that we don't have information about. I'm sort of torn about the third variance, because I'm not really a big fan of variances, period, because you have, there's a very high bar, and I, I think the bar needs to stay high, because they are an exception. So we did approve a exception to setback with regard to a fire station, which is also a public institution, this school's already there, I'd say if we were building this at some point in the future, it probably could meet those standards, but the way the site is configured and the access to it, I don't know if we'll ever get there. But saying that, the third variance, I'm, I'm not comfortable with at all, and I think I can, I concur with staff on that. Again, I'm not sure how we can do that. It just, it's, it's a request, I don't think, I don't think that the threshold for meeting the five criteria are there.
So where are we?
So I would not reckon, I would not support VR 1713.
Well, no, it's, if we go with the staff findings, condition approval eight says they do not approve of the non-conforming
So we're accepting their not approval.
Right.
So if we go with the staff report with, as amended for one, three, and six, and add nine, then they get a variance one and two, but not three.
Right.
Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes. Okay, somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, I've been trying to for 15 minutes.
Sure.
You can have as much time as you like.
God, there's a lot to read there. I motion that we approve PC 17
No, I move.
I move.
Now I motion.
I'm making a motion with my hand, I move that we approve PC 17-142, SP 17-127, CU 17-03.
Did you mean 127?
Pardon?
Where did you say 142?
I said 127, didn't I?
142 is the first one, if you had a whole thing up in front of you, you'd see it.
I'll repeat. I move that we approve PC 17-142, SP 17-127, CU 17-03, and VR 17-10, VR 17-12, and VR 17-13 with the approved modifications, is that correct? Or do I need to list all those? Pardon?
With the modification to the conditions?
Yes.
One through nine?
Yes, what she said.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. We'll call for the
Is there a discussion, right?
On motion?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, Tom, did you move to deny the, the variance? Is your motion
No, I said to accept it and to approve it with those, the ones that we've already talked about.
Okay, all right, all right.
So approving one and two and denying three.
Well, by denying three, do we squash the, the entire application?
No, only that.
And where does that leave the, the issuance of a, of a building permit?
Well, they, the, again, if you recall, and we can flip to that page, the third variance request, and I need to go back to my, I just got out of the staff report. Yes, Kelly, can you read the third variance?
Can you bring the sleepy bag?
And your recommendation?
Yeah, the third variance request is to be exempt from not, from adding non-conforming upgrades to the site, and the staff recommendation is reflected in condition of approval number eight, which says that request for variance to non-conforming upgrades is not approved, and the applicant shall meet the code by choosing one or, one of the two available options for non-conforming upgrades.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what that was, so we're
Want me to repeat it?
We're approving the staff recommendation with the addition of the revised conditions, now numbered one through nine. That's the motion.
Yes.
You have a second?
Yes.
Okay, so I call the votes?
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye, yeah, yeah.
Chairperson McGriff?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Go forth and do good things.
We'll look forward to that meeting.
Teach you all, teach you all students. Don't want them to hear anything.
All right, is there anybody here tonight that's testifying on the next item?
Yes. Can I pass these down?
Besides the applicants?
Anybody new?
Anybody new? Does anybody want me to read the hearing procedure again? If you do not read, want me to read it, just say, "No, I don't want you to read it again, just not sure yet." Does anybody want me to read it again?
No.
Nobody's nodding anything.
I like to, I like to hear
So I guess that means I'm gonna read it again.
No.
There was, there was head shakes, don't read it.
I said nod your head.
We had several people leave.
Well, that was the previous item, that wasn't this item. That was the other item. All right, so hearing that, no one is objecting to my not reading this, we read it previously, everybody's okay with it, there's the hearing procedure, there's the procedures over there on the wall, we are all good. Okay, thank you sparing me that. Yes, I'm gonna do that. So we have an application here, it's AN 1701, zone change 1703. Says TP is tentative plan?
Plat.
To plat 1707. That's, those are the files. So gentlemen, does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? Have you visited the site? I'll start with Tom Guile.
Nope.
I tried
You have not visited the site?
Nope. I've driven by the site, but since it's a long, narrow site, I've just seen a little bit of it, but I am familiar with the area.
I drove by the site?
No.
Ex parte?
No.
Bias?
Nothing.
Ex parte?
Yep, none.
Tom?
No.
Okay, and I have visited the site, I did not see anyone, I did not talk to anybody, I do not have any ex parte contacts, or conflicts of interest, or bias, or any other statement to declare. Does anybody wish to challenge the commissioners on our statements about what we did or didn't do, and what we might have seen or didn't see? Okay. Hearing, no objection. Todd, I don't know which application you're here for, because you didn't say anything on your slip here. All right, so we will open the public hearing on AN 1701, ZC 1703, TP 1707. And the applicants, would you like to come forward?
Are we gonna have staff reports?
Oh, sorry, staff reports, sorry, just wanted to get done.
That's okay, I understand.
It's okay, your, your staff report's gonna be wonderful and amazing, so please go
I will do my best. Thank you, Chairperson McGriff. This is an annexation, zone change, and subdivision combined application. There were two staff reports, and it's only because the annexation, staff report works best when it stays on its own, because annexation's a little bit different animal. But tonight, when you move forward with your motion, it's all one project, we just have two, two reports for findings, but it really all is a combined, and it can be a combined motion as well, tonight.
Or not.
I'm saying it can be, if you want it to be. So this, once again, is an annexation, just a little background, I'm gonna actually move forward and show you some maps, and then go back with this. So this is the subject site, it's 19701 Southeast Leland Drive, so this is an outline, it's about a 6.33 acre property. Lindsay Ann Estates is right next door, and this is called Lindsay Ann 2, it's the same developer. The surrounding zoning is, let me show you, I'm gonna use
The mouse that you can't
The mouse.
Is this still on the table?
There we go, okay. So the property is right here in red, just to, I tried to highlight the different zoning to get you to understand, just so you know, Wheeler Farms where we were a couple weeks ago is right here. The properties in gray are in, still in the county, so you have C-zone, bright yellow is an R6 zone, kind of an orange-yellow is the R8 zone, kind of a light-yellow is R10, and R3.5 is this medium brown zone. Wesley Lynn Park is located right here.
And blue is?
Blue is, this is a quasi-public, so this is one of those things where we have the park is half-zone, quasi-public, and half-zone R6. This is a layout from the applicant showing the proposed subdivision, and as part of our subdivision application, you're required to do a connectivity analysis to kind of show how the neighboring parcels would play out with the existing streets. So you can see this is a proposed street network, if and when the parcels continue on. This is an existing subdivision build-out. So I'm gonna go back and give you a little tagline, we have, so 28 lots have been proposed for the subdivision. As part of this analysis, there was a transportation impact report created that looked at the rezone from R10 to R6. So at R10, there could be potentially 17 lots, and R6, 28 lots. And so as part of the transportation planning rule and the analysis for the rezone, that is the, the numbers that Mr. Mobley proposed in his report, and the analysis down, and Mr. Replinger, who's not here tonight, that is what his letter looked at, and his letter is attached as an exhibit, and I know Mr. Mobley's here and can answer any specific questions you may have. Proposed the interconnection of the existing sidewalk system from Lindsay Ann 2. Staff believes and agrees with the application that it's continuing this cohesive R6 neighborhood, connecting up existing streets. They have an integrative stormwater management system, this area has been in the UGB since 1979, and the applicant has proposed, and we have conditioned, that all utilities can be constructed on-site, and do not create offsite impacts, specifically transportation and sewer. And Wendy Marshall is our development service manager, who's in the back, is available for any specific engineering questions you may have tonight, specifically related to sewer. And I'm pushing the wrong button. So I'm gonna go back here, we have two public comments, one, Michelle Angle, who came to the meeting on November 13th and provided comment, so I want to make sure that was added in, and Jamin Moore, and I apologize, I don't know if this is a woman or a man, so I can't believe I actually defaulted, because I think someone indicated it was, so I apologize in advance, not knowing the gender. But this person put two comments in, specifically related to pedestrian and bicycle access to Wesley Lynn Park, as well as necessitating to have a private park on the subdivision property. And so in the staff report, I did respond to two of these, I'll do the second one first. Subdivision applications don't require private park dedication, we look at system development fees for parks, who put into, and utilize as our park system plan. The city of Oregon City does not support public pocket parks for its, you know, hard for maintenance, and they are not really part of our park system plan, and so in that respect, all of these houses will be paying sub, system development charges for parks to, to help with upgrades and new additions to parks. Secondly, the pedestrian circulation system, I'm gonna go back to the area a little bit, and it's in the, in your staff report, but a lot of Leland Road has been improved by sidewalks, and most people in this subdivision area will access it by Jesse Court, and while it's not 100% perfect, there's a lot of sidewalk ability to get to the site. People have made comments about sidewalk connections along Leland Road to Jesse Court, and in my conversations with John Lewis, our public works director, he and the Transportation Advisory Committee will continue to monitor the Jesse Avenue and Leland Road intersection, just like they've been doing on the Leland Road, frontage on the other part of Leland Road, the, a new pedestrian crossing has just been put in, and that has been based on kind of a long analysis, as if there, if there's enough streetlights and enough kind of meeting the criteria for a protected sidewalk crossing. So until, you know, that, that analysis can be done here, it is much safer to be crossing at a non-crosswalk, knowing that we may not have adequate lighting. And so Mr. Lewis recommended that this area, Jesse Court, be continually monitored with the Transportation Advisory Committee.
You feel it's safer to, to not?
Yes, having a crosswalk that is on an, it's not lighted area?
Not lit, okay.
Not lit, having people feel protected, they're the pedestrian, if it, you're not in an area that's adequately safe to cross, pedestrians may see a crosswalk and feel that they have more protection than they really do. And so in areas that are not quite ready, or they haven't fully developed up, it's, it's much safer to wait until that time has come, and then at that point have an intersection cross
Could you pull up a map and show, because this obviously doesn't show Jesse Court.
Correct, and you know, I don't have it on here, and I can, and I can pull it
Doesn't the next one have?
Yeah, so if we look at
Okay, I
Yeah, here we go.
No, go back, you can't read that, no, go back to the one you just had up. Okay, now I can see where Jesse Court
So Jesse Court is right here.
No, Jesse Court is just above where it says R10. See where it says in the
Which says Jesse
That's Jesse Avenue, right here. This is Jesse Courts, excuse me, Jesse Avenue is right here, and this is the intersection of Jesse and Leland Road.
Okay.
And this is the parcel right here. The new intersection that has recently been added, intersectionary crosswalk is right here, and that has been a longtime monitoring process with Public Works, and when that has been able to be implemented.
Got a question for you.
Sure.
On the Leland Road, fronting there on the subdivision, is there room made for eventual widening of, of Leland there?
Well, all new subdivisions require to do the dedication of additional width to meet the standards. The one unique part is there are a couple of existing homes, right here, and here, and there's one right here, and so while they don't have sidewalks in there, and we're just gonna have to wait, they do have an expanded shoulder, so you can get to that expanded shoulder and get back onto the sidewalk.
Well, I'm not talking about the sidewalk so much, as I'm talking about Leland Road there at the, at the red point here, just
Yeah, the applicant will be required to make additional dedication as part of the subdivision application. And so that's the odd part, you see the areas where subdivisions have happened, you have the, you have the additional dedication, and then are these, a couple of these infillots where you don't have it, and you, you absolutely can see, and, and those infillots will happen through minor partitions, and they will have that dedication done at the time. Okay, so I'm going to continue. So there is a lot of criteria in the staff report, so I'm gonna try to condense it down to I think, what I think of the top issues are.
Did you have a readable subdivision plat? Because the one I looked at online and printed out, I couldn't read anything on it.
Okay, I can bring it up, yeah. Would you like me to bring it up now, or wait till the end?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Please. Even when I blew it up, it was kind of, it blur, all the letters kind of blurred when it went up to about 100%, so
Yeah, I can do that.
Did not work printing it out either.
Sorry.
That's okay, I was reading it from afar, so
It's on the disc I gave you.
Yeah, I was just gonna open it up with our, with your actual, I might go with the applicants. Oh, I see what you're doing, okay.
Yes, that's actually more readable.
Okay.
Can almost read it, yeah. There we go.
Okay. And I can zoom in based on here.
Yeah, one, one more.
Yeah, one more.
One more zoom?
There you go.
I'll try to do the best I can to get that centered. Okay. So if I could go back, did you have a question?
No, I just, it was just hard to read. I just couldn't read it. And I figured, oh, you have a bigger one.
Yeah, I do. So the, I'm just going to keep these up when the Planning Commission wants to go back through deliberations, but kind of the, the large, big-picture criteria come from the metro boundary change criteria, and then point down to, sorry, let's get back to where we were. As well as the criteria for annexation, is this inside the urban growth boundary? Yes. Will it be subject to the comprehensive plan? It is part of the, and has been identified as low-density residential. Is at least one lot or parcel within the territory contiguous to the city? Yes, it's next door. And is it conformed to all the requirements of the city ordinances? That's really the rest of the staff report and questions I'm, I'm available for answer. The criteria for zone change, once again, deal with consistency with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Public facilities and services, can they be met or can they be conditionally met? Is it consistent with our transportation system plan? And are this, in D regarding statewide planning goals, we have specific comprehensive plan policies related to zone changes, so D is not applicable. Just to kind of highlight what I'm seeing, especially after the Wheeler Farms discussion, you know, in this situation, ORS 195-11013A through C again talks about cities' inability to use school capacity issues on any basis for decision. And once again, we did not receive anything from the school district related to capacity issues. Our, the applicant's transportation engineer and our transportation planner did find that the zone change application, moving from an R10 to R6, was able to meet the transportation planning goal, was proposed, and no off-site impacts, other than the systems development fees paid by the individual homes. Sewer adequacy, our sewer master plan looks at kind of larger picture capacity issues, and then when an application comes in, the burden of proof goes back onto the applicant to get down to the nitty-gritty. And we can only do so much when we have our sewer master plan, and so the applicant did provide additional information. There's even addendum letter. And Ms. Marshall is available, as well as the applicant's consultant, to speak on that issue. Let's see. Along with a previous application about neighborhood compatibility, and I'm going to go back to the zone zoning map, while Planning Commission and staff have a different opinion related to neighborhood livability in the previous application, and the City Commission did find that neighborhood livability is compared on balance to others' comprehensive plan policies. In this situation, I think having an R6 recently built subdivision budding next door is very compatible. And in this situation, it's really continuation of an existing development pattern. These properties also use the lot averaging process. And so we have, in this subdivision, the smallest lot is 4,860 square feet. The largest lot is 29,075 square feet, and the average is 6,487 square feet. And so in this situation, while I think there may still be a difference of opinion related to if you are moving within the same comprehensive plan policy, I mean, excuse me, comprehensive plan designation, is that considered de facto compatible? I think in this situation, we have a budding R6 development right next door, and we are a continuation of that neighborhood feel of the R6 subdivision. So in this case, staff recommends that, you know, even in other situations, that I really do believe that neighborhood compatibility criteria can be found in this application, regardless of your opinion of, do, does the R6, R8, or R10 allow kind of de facto compatibility? I think those are my larger comments related to this application. If, this is a recommendation to the City Commission. Once again, if there's a recommendation for denial, it'll be appealed to the City Commission. And if there's a recommendation for the zone change to be denied, staff does still recommend that the annexation happen, and there's a default in the condition of approval that the annexation is R10. But that, that would mean that the zone change and subdivision would be denied. So those are, those are some of your options this evening, and I'm available for any questions.
I have a question for you.
Before, should you get to that?
Yeah.
This is going to be one of those interesting announcements. If any of you have a Volvo station wagon, your lights are on in the parking lot. So it belongs to somebody, so I was just asked to make that announcement.
Station wagon or SUV?
Said station wagon. Volvo wagon.
Convertible.
Okay, so it's nobody's car, okay. Well, we'll be calling AAA, I guess. All right. Sorry, go ahead, Todd, please.
I just had a quick question. And the Lindsey Ann Lane one, those are R6s. What's the lot averaging there? Is it down to fours? And do you have any idea?
You know, I did not do the analysis.
I just have a question.
No, my question was, was that, did that use lot averaging?
Yeah, I can answer the first, the second one, which is yes, that, that went in at the time that lot averaging was allowed. However, I don't have the specific analysis, but I'm assuming if it was allowed, that they've taken advantage of it.
Just wondered.
Okay. Vern, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, all right. Applicant, plural, or more than one. Todd, I'm presuming when you said you were representing the applicant, you meant this application, yes? Both, both what? The school district, the school district one and this one? Okay. So just next time, just put that on there. That totally can use me.
Is he the attorney?
And... No, he's a traffic engineer.
Just a second, I'm going to bring up your, give me one second.
Need a ride home?
Sorry. Multitasking is not working.
Was it you, Bob?
I'll give you a ride home.
And...
She only drives 10 miles an hour.
All right, that should work.
Okay.
Ooh, that's giant.
Thank you, Chair McGriff, members of the commission. My name is Chris Goodell with AKS Engineering. Address is 12965 Southwest Herman Road, Suite 100, Twelton, Oregon 97062. Here working with the applicant and for the property owner. Just to have a very brief presentation. Christina has a very thorough staff report, and we have very thorough application that we put together for this project. This here lists the basic project team members, including our firm, Perkins Coie, Geo-Pacific Engineering, Lancaster Engineering, and this lists the property owners also. This here shows the existing conditions of the site and the adjacent Lindsey Ann Estates subdivision to the south. It's approximately 6.33 acres, currently Clackamas County FU10 zoning. The planned zoning is Oregon City R6.
Can you make it bigger?
No. Make what bigger?
Well, you're showing us the light-colored stuff, and it's kind of tiny. And I have really good eyes.
Did you not get a set of, all this, all this, everything I have here is in the plans that we provided?
Again, when you're printing it out and you're looking at it, it comes out really, really small. Because I don't have a giant printer at home, so... Okay, just, go ahead.
We have a full-size set, if I may, if I can bring it up. That helps.
I'll hand it to you. Yeah. It's sheet number two.
And this will not be an exhibit because this is already in.
No, you already have it. Back in the old days, we used to give the planning commissioners these things, but we don't do that anymore.
I thought we handed them in, didn't we?
But they don't get sent in.
We don't get this.
Okay, we print a bunch of them, though.
No, they, they go to her, and then if we want them, we go in and get them.
Oh, okay.
They keep it electronic, so they don't have $5 million worth of trees being... Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I know, we print them all, and they are very expensive, so...
You said sheet two?
The second sheet.
Okay, P1-02?
Yeah, it should be the existing conditions plan.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, this is like, thank you. It's like 100% thank you.
It's good. I'll move along here real quick.
Sure, you're fine.
So just a few, this is a city map here. It's a comprehensive plan land use map. The subject property is shown with the dashed lines. The city boundary is in red, and the urban growth boundary, where it doesn't coincide with the city boundary, is purple. So this is, property is adjacent to the city. This is the, a map showing a portion of the original metropolitan urban growth boundary from 1979. This property was included. Still the same hatch, hatchmarks. A little bit about the zone change application. Christina spoke about it. It's FU10 to R6. R6 is a low-density residential designation. Services, as indicated in the staff report and our application, the services are available to serve the project. Christina showed this drawing as well. This shows the recently approved and built Lindsey Ann Estates project, Ellis to Estates, and Marlow Farms subdivisions to the south. And this application connects to those. So this project is consistent in terms of densities and lot sizes with those other projects. You asked a question about what was the average lot size, or was lot size averaging in Lindsey Ann Estates? And the answer is yes, and the, I think the average lot size was around 6,000 square feet approximately. The subdivision here shows continuation of Cedarwood Way and Cherrywood Way, and improvements on Leland Road. So this will be single-family detached homes. This here shows sidewalks and connectivity by roadways. So it's a continuation of the existing development pattern established from the south. In terms of utilities, we have an integrated stormwater management plan that includes street-side swales and a stormwater facility kind of in the southern portion of the site. Again, it's similar in terms of lot sizes and densities to the existing subdivisions to the south. That's all I have in terms of a presentation. I'm here with the civil engineering project manager, the traffic engineer, and the applicant's land use council. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them to the best of my abilities. And...
Bob, just jump in.
Can you show me that lot that somebody referred to as 4,000 square foot lot?
Where the smallest lot looks like the 4860, the smallest lot on the parcel, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Which one is that?
Yeah, where, where is it located? I don't see it.
I think you have to go to the one you had that showed the...
Yeah, I'll let Chris.
Well, probably Lot 1 is the, I think, the smallest one there.
Lot 1, okay. But Lot 2 is, is that the same size?
It's a little bigger because it's a corner yard, or corner side, so we make those usually bigger.
Okay, but Lot 1 is 4,000 square feet?
No.
No, 4812, something like that.
Hold on, okay, all right.
4,860 square feet.
But my, my bad.
And then 3 and 23 is so big because of the overhead power lines.
Correct.
3 and 23?
No, I, I spoke. Just out of curiosity, was there any attempt made to contact the tax, the tax lot that's cut out of 28, to see if they wanted to be part of this process?
Talked to the, you mean tax lot 10141?
You're talking about 1401?
Yeah.
We've had dealings with that property owner, and they were not interested.
Okay, I just, it's just a question of whether they were...
They've got the easement over the top of their property as well. What can they do?
But they didn't have to be part of it.
No, no, I just, it's just, it's, you know, you've got city property, and then this one little piece, which isn't technically an island, because across the street is, is county.
That's correct.
Whether or not you'd reached out to them is all I wanted to know, and you had, that's why.
And we've spoken to other properties in there, property owners in there as well.
Then they'd also have to be part of an HOA and pay those fees, so stand on it.
So what's, what's being done about mitigating clearcutting of all the trees, since it looked like there was a substantial number of trees on the property?
I don't know if there's a substantial. There's a number of trees, so they'll be either mitigated for on-site. The ones that have to get removed, they'll be mitigated for on-site and/or paid into the city's tree mitigation fund.
Which ones are going to be retained?
Well, we have a tree preservation and removal plan. And it's on sheet...
Oh, it's in, this tree preservation plan is in your exhibits, but it's not...
P10 and P, P110 and P111.
You have to dig down and give it, he's given.
Just said what's going to be happening.
The ones across the street are already gone. And the next one is 02.
So by and large, they're being removed.
So all the trees are?
I don't know about all of them, but the vast majority.
He's going to that page, I guess.
Yep. Pretty much. Yeah, it's about all of them. Might be one or two kept, but it's just one stretch of them that's all open on each side. But that's, I guess, oh, tractable stormwater.
So our arborist went to the property and investigated the trees and looked and see which ones could be preserved with the project, and that's what this plan here is showing.
Is Lot 28 an actual property?
Lot 28 an actual property?
The one that's the L shape?
It's an L shape?
Correct, it's a lot in subdivision.
So I was wondering, if all those electrical wires pass over there, where do they enter? Do they have to go under the wires each time to enter their property? Because how do they get inside there? Because it looks like the only place you can build it is behind 27 or 24.
All these, everybody coming off of Leland Road will be going underneath the power lines.
Okay, so they can't build anything under the power lines right now, correct? Is that possible?
Yeah, structures, no.
So their home has to be down inside there?
Yeah, we have a building setback plan that shows, I think it's sheet, I think it's part of the plat.
And what about 3? Because 3, those lines cross over most of all of 3.
Right, so if you look at sheet P103, it shows the lot areas and the easements, and then the...
And that's on this big map?
Yeah. Well, yes, it's on every, I'm assuming it's on the package that you got. But in terms of that...
This is bigger.
Yeah.
Again, see, I don't see anything on 3 here.
P103, and it shows the...
And you can build a little tiny shed in that corner, but there's actually fairly substantial, that's 100 by 40. So that's actually fairly substantial.
I was wondering how they're going to drive in there, but I see there, yeah.
Yeah, and the driveway would work, so...
And the other thing I was wondering, is there any reason why you can't do stormwater, the, those underneath electrical wires? So you can use that kind of area, or is it...
They don't really allow anything...
Under the electrical wires? Okay, I didn't know, so, okay.
Yeah, I presume there aren't any towers within...
Doesn't look...
Not within the street area. There's, I believe, if you look on the existing conditions plan, I'd have to, there is a tower that will be on Lot 3. Yeah, you can, you can see it.
The square is the tower, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Yeah, those things, I'm in those. All right, I don't think anybody has any more questions?
I got one.
Oh, you do?
Just for information only, how long does it take you to develop plans like this? What's the planning duration, the process?
To put together these preliminary plans?
Mm-hmm. And inventory and review of the lot and property and all that kind of stuff? Over a year?
No, I'd say, counting the survey and all that work, yeah, three months.
Three months?
Three to four months.
And then after that, kind of construction drawings?
Correct. Those take a lot longer.
Which will include the drainage?
Yeah, it will include everything that's shown here plus more detail, because this, our preliminary plans are very detailed, more so than most firms, I would say. But they don't lack all the detail necessary for a contractor to go out and bid a project and then build it.
Mm-hmm. Do you ever work with a D8 CAT operator? He's the last one to get the word if which three comes in. I mean, he, he just, forward, you know?[1750.73] I mean, he just, forward, you know? Just go.
Yeah, we work with contractors all the time.
Are there any other questions of the commission?
Of the commission?
Yes, this commission.
Of the commission. Of the commission.
Nope.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Chair Person McGriff, I failed to put Exhibit 1 into the record tonight, and this is a letter from the applicant to the planning commission. You have it on your dais in front of you. This will be, this just came in today and will be added into the record as Exhibit 1 tonight.
And again, unfortunately, we have not had time to read it. Todd, did you want to say anything? Nobody had any questions about that.
No, thanks.
Chris, did you want to say anything?
That was me.
Yeah, oh, sorry, Chris.
Is there another person?
There might be, who knows? Mike, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. Michael? Come on up, please.
Too late.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak. And I apologize, this is going to be a little bit repetitive because I said almost the same thing about a month ago.
You are fine.
I want to talk to you about...
Name and city residents.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't I say my name?
Nope.
Oh, Mike Mitchell, I'm an Oregon City resident. And that has to do with this, with lot averaging. The one, the Wheeler Farms property that you reviewed a month ago, over 80% of those lots were undersized. 25 of 28 of these are undersized. I know, I believe, that it's a glaring error in our code, that there's not a restriction on the number percentage of those lots in a subdivision that can be undersized. But I have to believe that a reasonable reading of that code couldn't lead someone to the conclusion that 25 of 28 lots can be undersized. You're not being asked to approve an R6 subdivision, you're asked to being approved an R5-something that doesn't exist. I know the bigger issue is the code. I don't know what flexibility you have to put a reasonable view on it. I've got to bring it up again. It, you know, it happened a month ago, it's happening at this one. I have the paperwork over there at my desk for an 11-lot subdivision in Park Place that the infrastructure is going in right now, and six of those 11 are undersized. I can't believe that a majority of the lots can be undersized and we still can call that an R6 subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Well stated.
Is there any further public testimony? Okay, is there any request for rebuttal?
Yes. I would just say that with respect to lot size averaging, yes, this application includes lot size averaging. There are many jurisdictions that have lot size averaging and some have a description of what, I guess, an upper-end limit, a largest and a smallest. This Oregon Cities Code has a smallest, so it's, you know, 20%. So that's what this subdivision has. But it's really, in terms of the density, that's, that's what's controlling the number of homes. So the, you still average 6,000, whether or not one's larger or smaller, they're still averaging over 6,000 in this case, where I think 6,400 square feet average. So we, we meet that criteria, we're over 6,000 square foot average and complies with the, the density.
Thanks, Chris. Chair McGriff, members of the commission, my name is Michael Robinson, I'm representing the applicant. My mailing address is 1120 Northwest Cooch Street, Coochesville, COUCH, 10th floor, Portland, 972094128. So I appreciate what Mr. Mitchell had to say, but the code provides, it's clear and objective, 16112050 provides that a subdivision in a number of zones, including the R6 zone, may include lots that are up to 20% less than the required minimum lot area of the applicable zoning district, provided the entire subdivision, on average, meets the minimum side area requirement of the underlying zone. So it's clear and objective language. The staff report for the zoning map amendment and subdivision at page 24 addresses 1612050 and explains why the application meets the standard. So while there may be disagreement about whether lot averaging is appropriate or should be used, it's clear that this application meets the standard. And on that basis, we ask you to approve the application, or rather recommend approval to the city commission of these three applications. We thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. And seeing no further testimony or any questions, I'm going to close the public hearing, allow the commission to deliberate.
Well, go ahead.
What's your pleasure?
Go ahead, Bob.
Well, I think both, both the public testimony given here, everybody's right. Everybody's right. It's up to us, I guess, to, to obviously make a decision. But I've stated before, I do not like lot averaging. I think it has got us captured, so to speak, from being held hostage by our own code. But that's a matter for the comprehensive plan and the legislative process to decide whether or not it's in the future for Oregon City's growth pattern. It's going to add density to our, to our city and we've got to decide whether or not that's appropriate or not. But in terms of this application here, it meets the code. And we've, we've got to uphold, uphold the integrity of the code. I think the applicant's done a good job on a problem lot. It's a big lot that tries to incorporate design with adjacent properties for street pattern and lot size, which is determined by lot averaging. And it's a problem lot because you've got that easement going through it. I don't see any problem with traffic generated from it on a regional basis for our intersections that, I can't bring them to mind or correct exactly right now. But, but point is, I think that everybody's done their job based on standards that really aren't, that are objectionable to some people, including myself, and that's being a lot of averaging.
So you're saying we're going to hold our nose and do something there?
Yeah, we're caught between a rock and a hard spot, but I come down on the, on the side of the city and the code and us being fair to everybody that comes before this commission. And if we don't like the legislation in the, in the code, then we change it.
Funny thing you should say there, because that's going to be our next topic on the agenda.
Next, what is done?
No, we've, we've had an application come before us tonight on the school board, and they're responding to the needs of the people to educate the kids, which is the amount and number and rate of growth is determined by our decisions for lot averaging. Density that we really haven't understood the, the complete effect of. And I don't know if I'm putting it in the right words, but I think we've got to look at that comprehensive plan. But in the meantime, we've got to respond to the people that make applications come before us. And as it stands right now, I'm going to support this application based on our code requirements. And to be fair, for all parties that, that testify tonight.
I will say one comment about your comment is that you're making the assumption that every subdivision is going to have kids in it, and that's not the case. They're showing...
They're going to have some kids in it.
They're showing that, that most of the new development that's happening in the Portland metro area is no, no kids.
And just one final point, we're planning for future generations here of, of, of kids that are 25, 30 years old, that have a different mindset in what the word "family" means and what the word "lot size" and "lot style" means and "lovable" ability. That's a whole new generation of people that we're planning for and responding, responding to. And I, I don't get a good, accurate read on that, except that the demand for housing is here, it's upon us, and growth is going to hit us like a tsunami here pretty quick. And we've got to start approving lot sizes that we're not used to.
I think the tsunami's already here.
People are moving out from what I heard on the news.
Just try to drive up Malala Avenue.
We have to stop at all the pot shops. I, I agree with the first two minutes of what you said, Bob. I'm hearing on the news, I'm hearing on the news about how many people are actually, they're saying move away from Portland and this area. It's not like it was when they were telling everybody to move here, but that's a different point. I think lot averaging, when it was first proposed in the code, was supposed to mean buildable lots and not under wires or next to a lake or, or a dump or whatever, that you could include that in your, into your whole lot averaging. To me, that's just a distortion of the whole thing, and I agree with Frank O'Donnell on the city commission on that. The thing that I'm bothered with tonight is, and I've told Laura this and Christina, this piece of paper came to us just tonight, and I feel like it's a decision-making instructions on how we're supposed to make our decision. And I haven't had time to read it, so I'm not going to make a decision when I haven't had time to read what I'm supposed to do and what I'm supposed to follow. I feel like now any discretionary has been taken out of my control and I need to follow exactly what's on this paper. I've already told them that. I need time to read these things when they come before us.
I don't have a problem with that. I want everybody to be comfortable with the decision, except me.
Anybody else?
Yes. Lot's been said about lot averaging, and it's not going to get settled in this room tonight in the next 30 minutes or 30 hours, however long we stay here. It's really, lot averaging is attempting, I believe, to take into, into consideration the characteristics of some of the land that we're all of a sudden starting to deal with. Next to the urban growth boundary, this one doesn't have slopes, but it does sit right on the urban growth boundary. And the power lines, the power lines have been there since 1960, and it's an attempt to get more efficient use out of the land, which can be said another way, prevent sprawl. We're using the land that we have with the characteristics on it to the best advantage we can. And, and it is the code that we're really measuring it on, as Bob has said, and that we, we have to vote the code that's on the books today. So I will support this.
Damon?
Yeah, I'll just go on the record saying I don't like the way the lot averaging is written either. And I was part of the original discussion and said, what happens when somebody puts a 40,000-square-foot lot in and then a bunch of 2,000-square-foot lots? But it was there for those unusual contours. But that is a may, it is what it is. I was the one who made the big argument about livability. And I don't see this as being the same case as the Wheeler Farm. Again, as was pointed out, it's an R6 against an R6 and against undeveloped property. So, and I did go back and look, and yes, most of them are under 6,000, but at least 11 of the lots are within 10%. And I think that's a reasonable variation. So it's much better than, again, the Wheeler Farm where I, if, if it wasn't, if it wasn't over 8,000, it was like right on the, so it's, it's, I think, a better place. My, my issue with the previous livability issues were the transitioning between the zones. So I don't, and I don't see those issues here. I should issue, do a thing about school capacity, just because you brought it up that I can't, so, but I won't.
I'm not paying attention to that.
The, you know, it's, it's, I, I think this is a reasonable continuation of the neighborhood that sat there. My concern is that it's all bundled together, and I don't know what's the outcome of the challenge to home rule and required voter annexation. Is that still bubbling through?
Still percolating through the courts.
So at some point, they could clear the land and then it gets overturned and they're stuck because they're not in the, in the city limits.
So I'd have to go back and look at this. My memory, when we looked at it the first time, is that if there's an annexation and no one challenges it, but it was, you know, the charter provision could have been applied, there's at least an argument that it's beyond challenge and, you know, since there's no appeal, it's, it's in the city, I believe, is what our reasoning was back at the time. So if somebody believes that it's wrong to continue to approve these based on the legislation, they need to appeal that and raise that issue. And, you know, if somebody isn't doing it, it's not that suddenly it's de-annexed.
Okay, that, that was my concern, is that you get six, eight months down the road and then finally the Supreme Court makes a decision, and it's like, oops.
Yeah, and I'm, you know...
But that's their business decision, too.
That's a risk they're, they're taking, and it's a risk the city takes as well, you know, because it'd be disruptive.
And we're just recommending, we're recommending approval of the annexation. It's the city commission that would be the ones taking the action.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that. But the subdivision and the zone change would stop with us, or will the whole package go up?
They have, the city commission has to approve the zone change, we would be approving the subdivision.
Okay.
You know, and...
It's one of the reasons why I don't like the consolidated applications. I think they need to go to each jurisdiction, each governing jurisdiction, I mean, a governing body and be settled there. Putting this all together, to me, just convolutes the whole issue. I know applicants are allowed to do it, I'm just, I'd rather, I don't like it. I'm just saying, I don't, I don't like it. To me, it muddies the water.
Understood, but, you know, the way it works when they're consolidated, it goes to the final decision maker, so.
I know. Again, I'm just voicing my objection. I don't like it because it muddies everything.
Take it up with the state rep.
On that, on that basis, though, I mean, I do not see an objection to this particular plan, other than that averaging sucks, but, you know, we'll just leave it at that.
Well, we all agree on that.
I got just one more thing, very short.
Oh, please, take all the time you like.
What I've noticed is that we've got a lot of players here. We've got the city, we've got Metro, Metro's got a big set of gloves on.
They don't scare me.
And we've got the State Land Use Board.
They don't scare me either.
And, and us. And everybody's got their finger in the pie, so to speak, with the responsibilities to how to develop a community. And lots of times, the decision has been made outside this jurisdiction with various policies and remedies and things like that. And I'm talking about Metro and trying to solve the density and available home sites. And it's a wonder, really, we get more decisions made sometimes. But here we are. And I'll say again, I'll, I'll support the, the application based on the code.
Well, gentlemen, as you know, I still have issues regardless of what the traffic studies say. It's death by 1,000 cuts. We're just continuing to fill the glass up, the glass is already running over. Again, I've noticed when I've been out that way, the traffic conditions out there, they are not good. That's about all I'm going to say. Do we want to make one motion or do we want to make three separate motions?
Or do you want a continuation?
Oh, no, you can go ahead.
I don't want to do any...
Chair Person McGriff, I have one 120-day question, if that's okay?
Sure.
So the applicant, the 120-day is December 9th. So before there is a vote, I'd like to get confirmation from the applicant that they're willing to continue.
You don't have to continue for me.
They don't, they have to continue the 120-day decision to allow...
Just nod yes from the audience, we're not reopening.
We're not going to reopen just...
We're not reopening.
Okay. So it sounds like they're willing to extend the 120, 20-day?
We'll get back to you.
Okay.
Well, either they are or they aren't. Getting back to you doesn't, doesn't help.
Our client's not here, we're not going to extend it tonight.
Okay.
Well, to respect that, I'm willing to make a comprehensive motion to recommend approval to the city commission of AN 1701, ZC 1703, and approve TP 1707, with the staff report as written.
Is there a second?
You're looking confused there, Chris.
I just want confirmation that it's not a continuation of the consolidated application to the city commission.
Nobody's requested a continuance.
No, 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 I'm sorry. It's a, it's a recommendation as a package to the city commission. I was just checking with our assistant city attorney.
We need a second before we can have any further discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
And so, as I understand it, since they're consolidated, there's one decision maker. What, you're recommending these various things, you know, typically you would be the final word with the subdivision. You're looking at me like I'm crazy.
Subdivisions are a type 2 staff decision. I don't know if that has any, any indication of that.
Good evening. So I think what we're clarifying is that the recommendation is for approval, from what I hear.
The subdivision.
And it would be, you move everything together as a package to the city commission. If you want to recommend approval on all three items, you can. If you want to recommend approval on one or two of the three items, you can. But the whole package moves together... But the whole package moves together to the City Commission unless you deny them all.
Okay. So what she said, no, I recommend approval of AN 1701, ZC 1703, and TP 1707.
I think you kind of already said...
But I, but I, I said them differently.
Does the maker of the second...
I'll say my second the same way.
Okay, we're good. All right. Call for the question.
All right. Hold on a second. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Abstain.
And Chairperson McGriff?
No.
Okay, motion passes, though.
All right, we have communications, and then we have to go back to the first item. So do we want to do the communications first, or do we want to go back to the other item?
Your pleasure. I certainly know there are people in the audience who probably would prefer to get that, that other item resolved.
Have you resolved the calendar versus business? That's the issue.
I think so, you know, and...
No, we are not taking any testimony or comments at this time. We'd like to hear from the attorney, please.
I think the only guidance we have that would even be conceivably applicable to this is that section that we quoted from Section 1.04 of the City Code. And let me see, I already put it aside.
Right, where they talk about Sundays and holidays, which implies calendar.
Right.
Yeah, calendar.
Which implies calendar, not only does it imply calendar, it says holidays mean something when it, on the last day, but it doesn't say anything about holidays on other days. So I think my recommendation to you would be that this is untimely.
Well, it would be if we're going with calendar days anyway, so...
So I think that was the question.
Yeah, yeah. And...
Are you, you all concur that that was the question? Is this, is the request timely?
Yeah, yeah.
And...
Okay, they seem to all, they all concur.
So I would move...
I need to rebut that. I have something to say about voting.
Chairperson McGriff, you have authority to control. You could allow additional comment or not. It's up to you.
Gentlemen, what is your pleasure? Do you want to allow additional comment or not? I'm going to go by, I'd like to take a poll. What's your, what's your opinion?
I think it's before the planning commission. I don't, I don't think there's any need to take any more additional.
Okay, so no more?
No, I don't think it'll add to the debate.
Okay.
No additional comment?
It may not add anything to anything, but I wouldn't mind hearing what he has to say, because it might be, I don't think it's going to change anything, but I think we should hear it out.
And I would not like to stifle the public process, so I'm willing to hear it.
Okay. How much time?
I say two minutes each, or three minutes each, because I know Mr. Robbins is going to want to respond to. So three minutes each.
Okay. All right, come on up. This is highly unorthodox, but we are going to err on the side of being open and transparent.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for the courtesy. Okay, so...
Can I get you to say your name for the record?
James Nacita, again, from Oregon City. So I was in the back looking over codes and statutes, and I'd like to make two points. One is the question of, the reconsideration code seems to be ambiguous as to who actually makes the decision to grant a reconsideration or not. I personally think, since, as I mentioned, it was Mr. King and Mr. Hill were talking to staff after the record had closed, Mr. King was on this side, Mr. Hill was on that side, and Mr. King actually went over to talk to Ms. Turway and Ms. Richter's side of the table. So I think Ms. Turway actually would have some conflict in making this decision, and I want to suggest to the city attorney that the Planning Commission statute at 2.24.090, subsection K, states to exercise any express or implied power or act pursuant to this code or Chapter 227 gives, would give this Planning Commission authority to make that decision. The other authority I would like to offer is that the date, the date ordinance that Mr. Kabizman was just referencing opens with, says, unless otherwise provided. Okay, so I would like to offer the section of the state statutes on statutory construction, ORS 174.120, computation of time, subsection 1, the time within which an act is to be done as provided in the Civil and Criminal Procedure statutes is computed by excluding the first day, including the last day, unless the last day falls upon any legal holiday, or on a Saturday, in which case the last day is also excluded. So if you read those statutes together, this state statute fills the hole and fills the Saturday that the local code ordinances. And, but to say it's untimely would produce an injustice, because if it fell on Thanksgiving, the holiday you're closed at, or Sunday, I'd be okay, but just the roll of the dice says a Saturday, that defeats the purpose of the ordinance, because the ordinance says you're supposed to have 10 days, and, you know, by, by that Saturday hole, I only have seven days. So that renders an injustice. And so, in 174.010, you're supposed to give construction to all statutes, and that's why I think you can read them together. And then 174.030, construction favoring natural right to prevail, where a statute is equally susceptible of two interpretations, one in favor of a natural right and the other against it, the former is to prevail. And if I, you know, if I have a right to a reconsideration, and there is this statute that will fill the hole of the Saturday, justice, I think, requires the commission to fill the hole on Saturday. It says civil proceedings, but, you know, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, you know, and it refers to state statutes, but these quasi-judicial proceedings, you know, govern, are governed by state statute, 227 and 197. So I think, I think, you know, I have a valid argument. Thank you.
Great. Before, I know you want to talk, but we want to hear his...
Yeah. Two responses. First, the question of ambiguity as a decision-maker, we don't even get there if the timing is wrong. Let's talk about the code versus a statute. Our code says, you know, has a, specifically for this, this code, the provision cited by Mr. Nacita, 174.020, says, "The time within which to act is to be done as provided in the civil and criminal..." Sorry, let me try again. "The time within which an act is to be done as provided in the civil and criminal procedure statutes." So it's specific as to what it applies to, civil and criminal procedure statutes.
This is neither.
This is not a civil procedure, and it's not a criminal procedure. And this is a quasi-judicial city code. I would suggest that our code language prevails.
The, the issue as to why this debate is being held tonight as opposed to handing planning staff, an intent to reconsider or appeal or however you want, a week ago, or two or three days ago, within a lot of time, kind of strikes me as curious. I mean, why are we talking about it tonight? Why weren't we talking about it? Why wasn't the, the intent to proceed with Mr. Nacita's request made by Mr. Nacita a week ago instead of tonight?
There's a lot of record to go through, so...
Pardon me?
There's a lot of record to go through, so...
Well, that's true, but, you know, why put us on the spot, you know, five minutes before we're ready to adjourn?
No.
To me, there's something, something different here.
All right, Mr. Robbins, you went your three minutes? Are you running the meeting, Mr. Mayby?
Yeah, he probably is.
Okay, just, just checking.
Our initials both are the same, so, you know, we're inter...
You know, I noticed that.
You noticed that.
We won't, we won't go there. Good evening, Chair McGriff, members of the commission, Michael Robinson, on behalf of the applicant. So let me start, if I may, with what I think you ought to consider is the most important thing. You should not make a decision on this. You're not required to. Forget the argument I gave you a moment ago or earlier tonight, that the language doesn't place this decision before the Planning Commission. If you look at the OCMC provision Mr. Kabizman cited, it doesn't even mention Planning Commission in it. It only mentions Planning Division and Community Development Director. So I think the idea of the Planning Commission making this decision like this is not what the code provides for. But secondly, if you want a practical reason why I believe it's the right thing to do not to do anything, is you're trying to do this on the fly. You've got attorneys citing you, all sorts of code provisions, none of it's in writing. We're just having to guess what it means. You're better at this than me, but my expectation would be you would want to see arguments laid out in front of you, and as you pointed out, when you get letters the night of the hearing, you don't really have a chance to read them. Here, you're even more disadvantaged, because you don't even have anything to read. The last point is, I guarantee you, you talk about justice, I think that's an ironic statement. If you make a decision, he will appeal it. So now we're going to have something else going up the chain. So I encourage you, you're not obligated to make a decision. I wouldn't take a vote or a motion at all, because it will be appealed. So that, but let me tell you, even if somehow we did get to the point of reconsideration, I want to advise you, the applicant's here, I have consulted with him, he will not extend the 120-day clock. We've been at this, if you recall, we had our first hearing when it was hot outside. Now it's cold and rainy. That's how long this has taken. And again, the principal consideration is, if you want to talk about justice, the principal consideration in Chapter 197 is getting applicants, applications through in a timely process. You're right, Chair McGriff, we've extended the clock, and we did so because we thought it was appropriate to the public to let them have their say within your process and to let this commission decide. Now you're hearing a very odd request. By the way, if I hadn't been here, it would have been made and discussed without any participation by the applicant. How is that fair? So I ask you not to make any decision. You're not obligated to. In any event, I agree with your staff, it is too late, the state, the statute controls. Let me see if there's anything else that might be helpful for you to hear from me, probably not. Oh, Mr. Nacita could have raised his issues, his errors, and preserved them at that last planning commission hearing. Lubis holdings are very clear that a person that observes procedural errors has an obligation to raise them, even if the commission is offended by it. So that's why sometimes we do things that commissions and councils may not like, because we're compelled to raise them. Mr. Nacita did not raise them. They can't be raised on the City Commission. They shouldn't be raised now. So I would ask you to take no action and just let this thing die. Thank you.
Mr. Kabizman, would you...
Thank you. And generally, I agree with what he indicated, except for one thing, the idea of not making a decision. And here, here's why, there's two reasons. First, a little bit skittish about not making a decision, given what happened with the Campidere Buildings and the Historic Review Board. I'm not certain if you're familiar with those. I can get in the details there. And what happened there, they, they didn't make a decision, and it came back to bite the city. The second issue, the concern about the appeal, if in fact the city doesn't make the decision, there could be an appeal filed sometime down the chain, that's even later. This way, the Planning Commission makes a decision. If in fact somebody wants to appeal the Planning Commission's decision not to grant reconsideration, that's moving at a faster timeframe than if it's an appeal filed three months later saying the city didn't, the Planning Commission never did anything on, on their request. So I would recommend having a vote.
Damned if we do, or damned if we don't, right?
Well, based on that, and my, you know, I didn't actually read the specifics, but I think we pretty much got all of, there are 260 between the two. I think that you're correct, that it's a calendar day, that the city's ordinance would trump, and...
It's more restrictive.
And, you know, the ability to bring something up can be done on a Saturday through an email filing, at least it would be in the office in a timely manner, which is not something that probably when that was written, it was like, eh, well, ain't nobody here. So as much as I dislike to do it, I think the proper thing at this point is to move the, to not reconsider the issues brought before us by Mr. Nacita, and to let the record continue as is.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
I could go along with what Damon said. We make a decision, but do we give a reason why we...
Make sure you get closer to the mic.
Did we give a reason of why that was what we did? Could we state we believe it was filed late?
Yeah.
And that becomes the condition?
But it's untimely and therefore not be reconsidered.
That says, we acted, and here's what we acted on. We didn't act on 1,000 other things that could have been before us, but we made it clear, what was our deciding factor?
What I would recommend is that the motion be to not take any action on the request for reconsideration, because it was untimely filed.
Yeah, I thought that's what I was trying to say.
I think you did, I'm just...
Sort of.
Yeah.
My second.
Well, I guess my, I was not here, but I guess my question is that if this problem, as stated, took place on October 23rd, which was two meetings before this, there was an opportunity, I presume, on the 13th, possibly an opportunity on the 13th, when the commission met again?
Well, that's, Mr. Robbins' point is, if he, irrespective of whether we wanted him to, he kept saying, there's a procedural error, there's a procedural error, then...
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, well, I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to keep all the dates straight in my head. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second that we not take any action on the requests due to the fact that it is untimely. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Nope.
We're waiting for the vote. Unless it's a procedural error.
Did we, I'm sorry, I missed the second.
Bob.
Okay, apologies. Commissioner Guile?
And unfortunately, I agree with Mike Robinson, Mr. Robinson, that if he had not been here tonight, he wouldn't have had a chance to counteract it. So unfortunately, I have to vote aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Chairperson McGriff?
Abstain.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, communications. So Laura has some possible dates for us to have a joint, not a joint, but to, we have to make a presentation to the planning, to the City Commission, but I would like to find out what those possible dates are and then make a suggestion. And the suggestion is that we have a goal-setting session before we go to the City Commission with our annual report, because I think it would be timely. And the reason I'm saying that is because in my many mind melds with Mr. Mahoney, and I say mind...
Collisions.
Mind melds that I've had with Mr. Mahoney, because we're like simpatico.
Okay, Dr. Spock.
And, no, not Dr. Spock, Mr. Spock. Remember, it was Mr. Spock. He has the mind meld.
Dr. Spock doesn't want you to spank people.
That's right. We had at least three things that I was aware of on our list. Number one was get the wetland delineation completed in Kanema, and I would say that has risen to the cream of the top, which is making some proposals and recommendations to change the lot averaging. And then number three would be the big kahuna, which is taking a look at what we need to do to, for periodic review. And there may be three or four others, but those were my top three.
Okay.
That I had got from all of you with the mind melds.
I had an opportunity to talk this over with...
And you've got it all solved?
No, I got it solved. It's just money.
Right.
About $250 million. But I think what we ought to do is be cognizant, there's a word for you, of the city budget, because whatever we do with the comprehensive plan...
That would be part of the discussion.
Is, is, is going to cost money.
It always has cost money.
And it's going to be an extended period of at least two years, if we're going to incorporate public testimony and conversation with the, with the citizens of Oregon City and yada, yada, yada. But the other thing I want to tell you, not tell you, but share with you.
We're telling.
I think the, I think the, the manner in which, and the process in which we put together a comprehensive plan throughout the state of Oregon is adequate. I, I really do. I think that we have to sit down and have a real, genuine conversation... I think that we have to sit down and have a real, genuine conversation back and forth with the community at large as to which direction the growth of this community is going to take, because it implies a lot of money, a lot of expenditure of public funds in the school district jurisdiction, in the city's jurisdiction, and all of the private districts that serve the, the community, like water treatment and what have you, sewer districts and, and things of that nature. And get something bona fide that we're all partners in. And I think when we do that, it gives the comprehensive plan a little bit more strength. It speaks for the community when we involve these people, us people, all of us. And I, I think that calls for not just a plan, but a strategy. And we've got to start putting faces on these plans, because we're dealing with people. We're dealing with crosswalks where people get hit. We're dealing with libraries where people check out books and educate their kids. We're dealing with parks where they recreate. We're dealing with public safety, you know, highways and things of this nature. And we've got to include these people, because they're not being included in the federal. We, politics at local, and that's where the strength of this country is, is in our people. And we've got to start talking to each other.
You weren't assuming I was saying that there wouldn't be any citizen participation?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, okay.
Comes to you, I don't assume anything.
Good, because I wasn't.
This, this is what I, I really mean, it's genuine. I think we've got to start planning our communities instead of with numbers, and they're important. We've got to start planning them with our heart. And we've got to reach out to each other and say, I got this, I got your back, you know? And it's, I'm not saying it's not going to be controversial, and we're not going to have problems that we haven't had here at this diocese here tonight and, and weeks to come. But we've got to make the effort.
Absolutely.
And it's got to be genuine.
Absolutely. I think the first two things on the list can be accomplished within a year.
Yeah, but we've got to keep in mind, it's going to cost money.
So Laura, you have some dates for us. Let's get some dates written down.
Yes.
We can look at the calendars.
So it's our regularly city commission scheduled date, which is the first and the third Wednesday of each month. The next available time to go before the city commission is December 20th, and after that, you have January 3rd and January 17th.
Okay, December 20th, January 3rd, January 17th?
Mm-hmm.
And December date was what?
December 20th.
20th.
We're not going to be able to have a goal-setting session by December 20th, so I would...
That's pretty tight.
I would assume we should probably look at the latest date possible.
2018.
2018, yeah.
What date was that again?
She gave us December 20th, which that's not going to work. January 3rd, 2018, January 17th, or we can even be looking into February.
And it may, we may want to skip the January 3rd meeting as well, because we won't.
Why?
Two reasons. One is that I believe it's mainly ceremonial on, for the city commission. And then two is the timing to get planning commission, you'll have one more planning commission hearing.
Yeah.
You mean, meeting?
Meeting. You'll have a planning commission meeting in a couple of weeks on December 11th, and then you, well, I'll talk to you more about it when my other communications.
I, I would, I think that we should have a goal-setting session sometime in January. I don't know what you guys think about that.
Yeah.
Let's do it on that date I saw on the calendar day, December 25th.
We can do January 7th.
We can make it a goal-setting session and a potluck party.
It'd get me away from my family.
I do, I, I would say also...
It's Bob's famous chili, or whatever it is you make, Bob.
Sorry.
You do have a couple of items scheduled for the first hearings in January, and the second hearing in January as well.
Okay.
Related to the items, I don't know that you necessarily need to do your goal-setting before you go to city commission. I can talk about...
I know we don't, but I think it would be appropriate for us to do it. That's why I'm asking them. I don't want to, I don't want to go to them and say, I'd like to go to them and say, this is what we've done, and this is, these are our goals for the coming year and things we are going to be working on. I think it just, to me, it just sounds better.
I can give you background on, on each of those items if you'd like as well?
No, we can talk about it at our goal-setting session.
Okay.
So when would you guys like to do that?
And are there certain dates we have to do that on Monday, Tuesday?
No, I'm just...
Be any place.
I'm actually thinking, may, why don't we meet, if we can and staff's available, let's see if we can meet maybe on December 18th.
Oh, geez.
You're going OGs?
I've got a store to run around Christmas time.
It's Monday night. You're going to be open Monday night?
Uh, probably not. But you're going to be a week ahead of Christmas.
I'll feed you.
I'll have to check the availability of the chambers if it's in...
Do we need to put two or three session, or two or three possible dates in case there are really conflicts with somebody?
Well, we'll, we'll take it as we, we'll take it as we go. I mean, we don't, we've not done this lately, so we're all treading on new ground and we're going to feel our way through it as we get there.
You mean, thin ice?
I was just looking for a date to do it.
That's why I'm asking you guys right now, what date do you want to do this? Why threw out something just for the hell of it?
Laura's asking.
Can I make a suggestion? Your next meeting is December 11th, which is two weeks from tonight. The, because you've made decisions on the two items that were before you today, there are no items on the agenda, there's just interviews. Right now, you're scheduled for five interviews on that date, so perhaps we could put this on, on the agenda item after the interviews and we could talk about it.
Five?
No, no. I think we ought to go after the first of the year, brand-new year, holidays are over.
And we'll know who's the new head of the year.
I think we, no, I disagree. I think we should get started on it just right because of burn, because we are going to throw, we're going to spend the first, talking about what we want to actually have as goals. Then we're going to sort those down and figure out, okay, what can we accomplish?
Okay.
It's going, it's going to be a process like a big triangle. You know, we're going to start up here with, with everything in the world, and then we're going to keep going down and down and down till we come up with three, five, I don't know how many we want. We haven't made that decision. We can, I think we, we know each other well enough, we can feel our way through it. I mean, we'll all talk about it, we'll have a basic agenda. I think, I, I have a lot more faith in you maybe than you have in yourselves. I know we can do this. I think we should get started sooner than later. How many times have we talked about we need to do this?
I have faith, I have faith in God.
I do, too.
But I don't think that he would touch there with a thin foot.
I have faith in you.
Just real quick, how much time do you have allotted for the interviews? Is like 20 minutes apiece or what?
Or do we have an hour for the first and we could spend the second hour doing something else?
I haven't allocated time. It's up to the, the commission to decide how much time you'd like. We, right now, we have the whole meeting, it's just the five interviews, so it's up to you guys.
If you guys are okay, let's put it on the agenda and see how far we can go. We'll do the interviews and we'll see how far we go, and then we'll schedule...
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
And we'll schedule something else, because we know we're going to need it.
So the work session is after...
Yes, the interview.
December...
No, it's going to be on December the 11th, our regularly scheduled meeting.
After the meeting, yes.
After the interviews.
Yeah, which right now is the only item on the agenda.
And just to clarify...
And we want you to bring your world-famous chili.
No food? I'm not getting in a food fight with anybody.
Nobody's going to cause a food fight.
Anyway, let's...
Only person I think of would have a food fight would be him, so...
So it's a brainstorming for the upcoming goals?
Right.
For the next year.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
And just, and I would say allocate 15 minutes for each interview with a five-minute break in between.
When she said brainstorming, I lost it.
For planning purposes.
When you said you lost your brain and we said brainstorming? Uh-oh.
It doesn't, all right.
We'll find one for you. You know, it's like, who, who was it in the Wizard of Oz that needed to get the brain? Was, it was the, the...
The Tin Man.
Miss, the, no, he...
It was the Tin Man.
The Tin Man, yes, so we'll, we'll, we'll find you.
The lion wanted a heart.
It was the lion wanted, the lion wanted courage and the scarecrow wanted...
Well, let's invite them.
I'm sure, I'm sure we can find them. Would you put your, I'm, I'm just not inclined to be having this discussion about this anymore, so if you have a question, Dan, could you please put it in writing, give it to Laura very quickly, and she'll tell us whether we need to be dealing with this or not?
What?
You, it says here, let Dan ask his question.
Yeah, and verbally, you wanted, you wanted us to ask his question.
So does it involve the thing that we just did? Okay, we already did it. The other person isn't in the room, like I said. Is it something that's pertinent? Put it, give it to, tell Laura what it is and she will let us know. Tell, go tell her right now.
He, he's declined.
Handle it.
Yeah.
The way I want to handle it.
I think we just went through enough agony with that.
I do have more communications if you have a moment.
I don't.
All right.
He's not going to agonize.
He's not agonizing, I'm talking about us.
Okay, well...
We had that sort of sprung on us, so whatever.
Okay, what do you have, Laura?
All right, so I have a couple of things on my list. The first thing is planning staff. We are finally back to our staffing levels, the normal staffing levels. We had, today was the first day for our new assistant planner, Carlos Caillia, and we're excited he's going to join us for a year duration. So we have a senior planner, which is Christina, two planners, Pete and Kelly, and then two assistant planners, one is that temporary one-year duration, Deliana Vasaliva is the permanent assistant planner, and then Carlos as well.
Why is it a temporary position?
Because of funding.
Oh.
And so we want to make sure that we are, two reasons. One is funding. A lot of the funding for that position is coming through for grants that we've received for staff to work on the legacy project as a backfilling thing. Then also, we are very careful to not hire permanent positions if we don't know that we'll have the work and the money to support that in the long run. So that's why over the years, you've seen us run on skeleton crews. This year in particular, we have had a lot of time where we had unfilled positions and, for example, we've had more pre-apps this year than we've ever had since we started keeping track in our computer system in 2003 already, and the year's not even over. So we've had a lot of record-breaking development complicated, too, which makes the volume hard. So we're excited to have a complete staff for at least a year. That's good. And I did, we talked about the yearly update to the city commission, it sounds like Chair McGriff, we'll, we'll talk about our goals next time, and then you'll come back to the city commission in January, I'll forward that along to them.
We, or a later date.
Or later date.
Later date, please.
All right.
We didn't say that.
I do want to remind the commission that we're meeting on December 11th, our regularly scheduled meeting in two weeks, and we talked about what's going to be on that agenda. On December 12th, the day afterwards, we'll have that joint work session with the city commission. So there's going to be a couple of different work sessions going on that day. You're going to have a, it'll start with a joint work session with the planning commission and the city commission to talk about alternate mobility targets. And then, what's that?
Time?
I don't know what the time is. I think it was still set in clay, not stone, but it was on the earlier mark, I think 5:00 or 5:30.
So they generally meet at some weird time, like 5:30, which is...
They do, they do.
Weird.
They'll have a full agenda after that. So after that, they'll close the joint work session, and then they're going to have their own work session with the city commission. They'll be talking about a variety of items. One of them is the lot averaging.
So we're not involved in that? The planning commission doesn't get to have any say in the lot averaging?
Well, not at this point.
The city commission has asked that we attend the December 12th hearing to talk about a couple of different things. One of them is lot averaging. And so they just want to know, they've also heard concerns regarding that standard, and so they want to know more about how it got created, how it's been used, and how, what the possibilities are for changing it in the future.
So I noticed they don't watch our, our proceedings here, or at least only two do, so are they going to watch and see how we've discussed it?
We'll talk about it, and this is just the first meeting. I suspect there may be more meetings, or if we, if we change our code through a legislative process, you would see it in that capacity, so more to come.
Sorry to be cranky about that, but they, they should be watching what we're saying.
And then the last, so there's a couple of different things on the...
Can you back, just, sorry, just back up just a little bit. So our only discussion with the city commission at the work session is the alternative mobility standards.
That's what I was asking.
And I guess I'm, I'm...
That is correct.
I'm trying not to feel incredulous about the fact that they do not want to have a discussion with us. It's not your, not you to determine, but I'm just trying to say, why would they not want to have a discussion with us about lot averaging?
Since we're the ones who get it first.
They just want to understand the policy, right? They want to...
Yeah, so then let me ask you, second question is, does the city archive the videotapes from the city commission meetings? Because I think it would behoove people to go back and look at that when you were on, I believe is when you said it was discussed, and see what, because nobody, because seemed, I mean, nobody's going to remember what the intent was, but there was obviously discussion about it. And the city commission minutes are not to a degree of specificity that you'd be able to determine that, they're pretty general.
And Renata said she was on the planning commission when it was decided. That meeting I attended the last time, she said, well, I was there when, on the planning commission, when we decided that.
But they did not make any statements as to what the intent was. Nobody said anything about that. So it's kind of like, well, my question is, let's go back to the tape, you know? I mean, literally, not, not just a funny statement, but let's go back to the tape, let's look at it or be able to have access to it so we can look at it and go, okay, this is what they were talking about.
It was the last commission meeting, only two people watched our tape of our conversation.
I'm talking about going back.
I know, all the way back, I know. Got to do some research.
So I'm putting together...
That'd be a question for Katie Riggs, then.
So I'm putting together the research for that city commission agenda packet, and I've already identified all the hearing dates that we talked about lot...
It was just...
Yeah, we did, we adopted it, and then we amended it through time. And so I'll list all those out with a link to the online list where you can watch the videos as well. So it should all be there. I, I may or may not miss stuff, hopefully not, but we'll have that body of information put together for the city commission to look at. And then we present the options of like, if you move forward in this direction, here's the process for that, this direction, here's the process for that. So they understand the next steps, and then they can provide that.
Because it involves it so much, even though we're not allowed to speak.
I know, I'm looking at this as kind of a trickle-down thing, and I think it should be a trickle-up.
And if we're not allowed to speak, are we all going to sit there to hear what they have to say and what the reasoning behind it was so we understand it for the future?
Well, that raises the issue, is when we refer things to the commission, and this is a question for, for Bill. It's on the record, as I understand. The findings that we establish and forward to the commission, everything that they hear is based on the record, but they don't read it.
So in a quasi...
You can't ask that question.
In a quasi-judicial matter, everything would be on the record. You know, we're talking about a legislative process, and the legislative process hasn't even started. As I understand it, what the city commission is doing is doing some research to find out why it was, why the, why it's there, what the, what the policy discussion was at the time, if any, and assume they get through that, possibly make a recommendation for some changes. And at that point, that would start the legislative process that'd work its way back to the planning vision.
The whole thing that triggered the thing was that last big subdivision that we, we referred to, wasn't it?
Yeah, we're separating.
It was bubbling up, it was, that was, that was, that brought it to a head, but it's been there the whole time, because we've all asked questions about it from the beginning and said, what, what is this? And I mean, if I base my, I, I base, if I base my...
Can you take it off?
Decision on, not decision, but if I base my thinking on what you said the intent was, then we are way off-base from what you recall, is that that was not the intent of what has happened. So somehow or another, over time, this has evolved and it's gotten completely...
Bob, when you were asking your question just a minute ago, was that involving, should they be reading the documentation that, from our minutes, when they have their meetings or was that for the future?
They get it in their packet, but again...
Should they be looking at, at our meetings prior to their meeting?
And that was what I argued about.